Good afternoon and welcome to the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners meeting for March 12, 2019. And today, our invocation is led by Pastor Steve Nicholson from the Faith Family Outreach Church in Clearwater. Please come forward. And thereafter, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Eggers. Please stand.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Lord, we just humble ourselves today. We thank you for your counsel, your wisdom. I thank you for your servants that have served long and hard on this Board of Commissions. Pray you give them abundant grace and strength. And you said blessed are the peacemakers, Lord, for they are the ones that will inherit the kingdom of God. And so I pray that you give them wisdom to make peace in this place and in this county and in this city. Continue to work through them and use them as your servants. And bless all we say and all we do with your hand. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations, and I'm going to come down front, but I'd like to ask Karen Higgins, who is President and CEO of Park, and Doug Gates, who is Board Chair for Park, to join me up front.
Hi, thank you. How are you?
I'm doing fine. Thank you so much.
You can join me on this side if you'd like. Well, we're -- is this on? Great, thank you. Well, I'm glad to have Karen and Doug joining me here today to talk about the Developmental Disabilities Month. So approximately 240,000 people in Florida have a developmental and intellectual disability. Pinellas County residents, with and without disabilities, work together, live together, play together, create together, learn together, and grow together. Every person, regardless of the ability, has valuable strengths, infinite capacity to learn, and the potential to make important contributions to their local community. Families of people with developmental and intellectual disabilities deserve our admiration and recognition for their caring commitment and ongoing support, which are essential to an independent and productive life for their loved ones. Park provides innovative programs and services that improve the quality of life for adults and children in our community. Park advocates for services that promote positive changes so people with disabilities can exercise their independence and experience life to the fullest. Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is an appropriate time to recognize Park's accomplishments concerning persons with disabilities and to also identify the improvements that are still needed to fully include all of Pinellas County's residents with developmental and intellectual disabilities. This month is a time to celebrate the abilities and contribution of people with developmental and intellectual disabilities and how they enrich our community and enhance our diversity while turning disabilities into capabilities. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that March 2019 is recognized as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. That's wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Always. Thank you very much. Doug Gates, our Chairman of the Board, is going to speak.
Thank you, Karen. And thank you very much. Those are incredibly kind words. And, you know, as this proclamation and the commitment to advancing knowledge and promoting awareness of individuals with developmental and intellectual disabilities really raises awareness in the community. Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is an opportunity for us to continue to promote inclusion and work together in our community. So once again, thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. And we're also fortunate, you all serve primarily South Pinellas County, but we're also fortunate to have the Arc of Tampa Bay, who primarily serves North County. So we have two exceptional organizations who are really providing incredible care for our adults and children. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Hold on. Pictures.
Hold on.
Pictures.
Yep.
Picture?
Pictures.
No, and I need to do the proclamation.
I know.
Try the new route today.
The proclamation is transcribed. Three counts. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you so much.
Okay, next is the St. Pete Clearwater International Airport. And it goes by the acronym PIE, but that's also the symbol when you want to fly in and out of PIE, P-I-E. Day proclamation. So Tom Juiceberry is going to be accepting the proclamation. He is the Director for our airport, and I'll have you introduce everybody.
All right. Long as staff, in fact, I'm going to let you introduce yourself and also what you do. Again, proud Director of the St. Pete Clearwater Airport, Tom Juiceberry.
Yvette Ailey, Deputy Director for Finance and Administration.
Kathleen Good, Real Estate.
Monique Savis, Administration.
Secretary.
Michelle Routh, Public Relations.
Mark Sprague, the Deputy Director of Operations and Facilities.
Cheryl Saska, Airport Admin.
Rick Lewis, Facilities.
Neil Briggs, Facilities.
John Zbicki, Maintenance.
Mike Agina, Airport Facilities Manager.
Well, thank you. You represent, I know there's more employees that can't be here because they're running the airport right now. But we are very, very proud of all that you have done and continue to do at our airport. Each one of you plays a very critical role, and it's been awesome to see the number of flights increasing and the productivity of the airport. And just congratulations. You know, we're really proud of you. So the first scheduled commercial flight in the world originated from Pinellas County on January 1, 1914. St. Pete Clearwater International Airport was originally named Pinellas International Airport and assigned the three-letter airport code designation of PIE. So now we know the reason behind it. PIE served over 2.2 million passengers in 2018 with nonstop air service, and I emphasize "nonstop" air service, to 58 destinations, breaking its all-time passenger record for the fourth consecutive year. PIE is the ninth busiest of Florida's 20 commercial service airports, ranking Florida as number two in the nation for air travel, with 49% of visitors arriving by air. PIE is a major economic engine for our region by providing over $1 billion in annual economic impact and supporting over 7,000 full-time jobs. PIE contributes an estimated $226 million in regional spending per year. In conjunction with PIE Day, meaning P-I, that is celebrated on March 14 around the world to recognize the Greek symbol, PIE, which represents the infinite ratio beginning with 3 dot 1 4. Ha! So now therefore be proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that March 14, 2019 be recognized as St. Petersburg Clearwater International Airport PIE Day. All right.
We'd like to all thank you for the kind recognition. And in celebration of PIE Day, I wanted to have a play on words, we're going to be serving pieces of pie. So you're all considering pieces of pie here. So the first question I was asked is what kind of pie is it? Both key lime and strawberry. So those will be served through you. I would like to go ahead and take this opportunity to thank my great, hard-working and dedicated staff, as well as all the tenants that are back at the airport, all our state and federal agencies that really contribute to making pie as great as it is. So we appreciate that. But I also like to recognize the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the county administration, and all that they do to continue to support the airport. Thank you. So with that, Happy Pie Day.
Happy Pie Day. All right. Do you want a pie? Yeah. It would be classified as one of those. One lady.
Absolutely.
Cute little pies.
And it keeps going beyond that, too. That would be my engineering days.
Turn sideways, please. Turn sideways. I don't care.
Don't be a posse now, Justice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Flowers if they bring to you.
What is that, publics?
More like Sam's stuff. Oh, I've got to step back.
Are you going to feed him the pie?
Oh, dear Lord, no.
Try it again. One, two, three. Thank you.
You know, the old wedding thing?
Yeah.
That old wedding thing where you smash it in the face.
All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Now pie for everyone's reason. Okay.
We'll see what it is.
What are you sitting there doing? Are you sitting there doing that?
I don't know why. We'll see what it is.
What are you sitting there doing? Are you sitting there doing that?
I don't know why. I don't realize how early. I know.
Like a five-minute break and let him serve the pie? And then get Gary? Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break in case somebody wants to get a piece of pie. Help yourself. And then we'll go back to our partner presentation with Mr. Mormino. So anybody who wants pie, you can help yourself. And your piece, your slice of paradise, at least in the form of a pie. So with that, we'll resume the meeting, and I'd like to turn over the next item to our hashtag Pure Pinellas Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as we've been talking about, trying to bring examples to the board and the community of things that make Pinellas Pinellas, and we believe that our history is the foundation of who we are, both individually and as a community. And today, we're incredibly fortunate to have as our guest Dr. Gary Mormino. Familiar to most of us, but those who may be new, he is a writer and author of a wide range of academic and popular historical books. He's written for The Times, The Sentinel, The Herald, and he currently still writes a bi-weekly column on state and local history. He has been honored by the Florida Humanities Council as the Humanist of the Year, and his book, Land of Sunshine: State of Dreams: The Social History of Modern Florida, was awarded the Charlton Thibault Prize by the Florida Historical Society. So I'd like to welcome Dr. Gary Mormino today to share a story with us.
Thank you. No historian should be smart enough to try to succeed key lime pie, by the way, but I'm here. I'm delighted to talk about one of my favorite topics, World War II and Pinellas County. So a sense of perspective. On the eve of World War II, on the eve of Pearl Harbor, Florida had 1.9 million inhabitants. It was the smallest state in the American South, smaller than that of Arkansas or South Carolina. Pinellas County had a population of 90,000. St. Petersburg had 60,000. Clearwater, 10,000. Largo, 1,000. Pinellas Park, 690. A sense of perspective in this sense. And World War II changed everything. Florida today is a Sunbelt mega-state, 23.7 million, bigger than New York City. So how did it affect Pinellas? We're going to talk about a woman. How many of you know the name Mary Lou Baker? Let's be honest, not a lot. One name, well, okay. Mary Lou Baker, when I was doing research on World War II in St. Pete Times, her name kept appearing. What a fascinating figure. Born in Utah in 1914, a family moved to Clearwater in 1925 on Virginia Avenue. She's an alumna of Clearwater High School, Law School at Stetson, and she became a lawyer and then married Sergeant Searl Matthews of St. Petersburg. He's one of the great athletes in Admiral Farragut history. So when World War II breaks out, Searl Matthews is flying missions in the South Pacific. And in 1943, Mary Lou Baker becomes only the second woman to serve in the Florida Legislature. Edma Fuller of Orlando earlier. In that 1943 Florida Legislature, there are no Republicans, no African-Americans, no Hispanics, and one woman, Mary Lou Baker. And she authors this piece of legislation officially called the Married Women's Act, but the press soon dubbed it the Women's Emancipation Act. What's interesting is what was considered emancipatory in 1943. What the bill really was, it provided women the right to convey their own property while their husband is in the service. She tried to attach a bill to get women the right to serve on juries. That failed. That would not take place until 1949. It was a very difficult bill to get passed. Archie Clement, her fellow legislator from Tarpon Springs, called Baker's measure dangerous. Clement and Florida's colleagues, let's not get sentimental because there's a good-looking lady here sponsoring the bill. Critics humiliated the bill with entangling amendments. She talked to every single legislator and got it passed. And she says to The Times, isn't it grand that it passed? When she ran for reelection in 1945, she had a very tough opponent, and he asked her a question that would be crippling to many. He said, "Why are you not using your husband's name? Why are you using Mary Lou Baker? Are you embarrassed because of your husband?" And she said, "Sir, my husband is a courageous aviator." And the exact quote is, "I received my law degree and my certificate to practice as Mary Lou Baker. It might even be considered unsportsmanlike for me to use the name of my husband upon the ballot and thereby borrow the goodwill established by the name of Captain Searl Matthews." She won the reelection battle, and during the celebration, she announced, first, that she had just told her husband, and secondly, she had told her husband that she was pregnant. By the way, when I nominated Mary Lou Baker for the Florida Women's Hall of Fame, I did not know where her son lived. Her son, we finally connected. He's a psychiatrist in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. She ran again for reelection in 1947, but was defeated. She died very young. She died, in 1965, she had not even reached her 50th birthday. But there are only two women from Pinellas County on the Florida Women's Hall of Fame. Anyone know the other? There's an interesting connection. One of the reasons Baker lost was by the late '40s, Pinellas County was changing dramatically. Republicans from the Midwest moving transplants, and Pinellas was converting to what would soon become a Republican county. And Mary Grizzle was the first Republican female legislator in Tallahassee. So Pinellas County has an interesting connection to the history of women in Florida and World War II. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about Pinellas history.
Thank you. Thank you. It was a very applicable story since it's International Women's Month. So thank you, Dr. Mormino, for such an interesting presentation and a glimpse into the history of Pinellas County. And thank you, Commissioner Justice. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mormino. We appreciate it.
And we have a women majority on the county commission, which is historical. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Moving on to Consent Agenda item, does anybody have anything to be pulled? It's items four through 12.
Move approval.
Madam Chair.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gerard and second by Commissioner Welch. Just so everyone knows, we have a brand-new clerk in training, so we know things will be, all being under training during this commission meeting. Yeah, I can't. Need a seventh person. Mr. Long? What? Yes, please. Oh, no. That's setting's just a minute. It needs to be down here. Okay. Unanimous approval. Moving on to Agenda Item 13.
Item 13 is a standard ground lease agreement and consolidated agreement with Brookline PIE Olmerton. This is for 2.68 acres at the airport. A request for note, a negotiation was issued in May of 2017. This will result in Brookline developing a hotel and commercial office building.
It was, it's a very interesting history when you go back to 2007, when some of this was negotiated. My question was, is it, I thought it was interesting, and is this standard in commercial leases that it's only every five years that you look at the CPI?
Tom is here.
Instead of having an annual escalation?
Tom Juiceberry, Director of St. Pete Clearwater Airport. It is consistent with the rest of the leases.
With the rest of our other leases?
Yes. It goes up every five years.
And also, how did you establish the rent and the rent credits? I mean, is that consistent with other airport property?
It is, yeah. The 35 cents a square foot is consistent with fair market value. We put the RFP out on the street for the Phase 1 property. They came in with a cost of 5 cents an acre, or excuse me, 50 cents an acre for that property. So the other question was with regards to the rent credit. That was for infrastructure improvements that Brookline is going to make. They're going, basically going to be extending the roadway that runs east of Cracker Barrel to be able to connect that property.
Okay.
So we're participating in that.
This has been a project long coming.
Yeah.
Any other questions from anyone?
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Welch and a second by Commissioner Gerard. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Long, maybe you need to leave and then rejoin? Maybe. Okay.
Yes, please.
All right, it's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Agenda Item 14.
Agenda Item 14 is the Fourth Amendment to an agreement with BBK for tourism marketing services. This is our current contract. There was an effort to bifurcate two separate competitive contracts. It was based upon the proposals, they staff decided to, I don't know, not accept those bids, and then continue these services while they alternatively look at it. So this provides a six-month extension.
Any questions? Commissioner Eggers.
We are going out for an RFP. Will we? Here. Okay. Thank you.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Welch and second by Commissioner Long. Motion by Commissioner Welch and second by Commissioner Long. Unanimous approval. It passes. Moving on to agenda item 15.
Item 15 is increasing the matching share commitment for, with the U.S. Economic Development Administration. This is for a county's grant application for construction of Tampa Bay Innovation Center incubator. As you recall, and as previously discussed, the county committed to a $3 million local match. As a result of the project, that amount has been increased to 4.5 million, and that would come out of the general fund since it, we are no longer selling the Star Center. So this would increase the, the county's award that would result in county receiving 7.4 million of USDA funds.
I looked at Charlie, and Charlie looked at me, and I think we're both puzzled. So Charlie, Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to clarify where the source of the funds are.
Okay. Where's?
Because I think you mentioned the general fund, and that's why I reacted.
I meant, the general fund?
That's what you said.
Oh. The...
Mike Midell, Economic Development Director for Pinellas County. The source of funds haven't been determined yet. I mean, when we actually obtain the grant, we will, we'll know. We have to come up with $4.5 million. Now, there are multiple sources that are possible for this. One obviously is the general fund. One possible source, depending on the guidelines that are developed by the Joint Review Committee, is the penny. So this, this, if, if approved, the construction and design of this facility will take place over the next three years. And the penny money begins in January of 2020. There's also a possibility that we could use some of the existing penny money and pay it back out of Penny Four. The other opportunity is to go to the state legislature for some, some matching funds, which we would intend to do if you approve today. And the other option is to go to the private sector and try to fundraise through sponsorships, and we would also do that.
Okay. As we learned the other day, we also have to be budgeting about $1 million in equipment. So just, that 4.5 million is just the match for the building. And...
And we would try to value engineer and get the equipment out of that, as well as go to the private sector to raise funds for that. And to see if we can get equipment donated by private sector manufacturers, which has often happened in the past. So we'll do everything we can to offset that.
Commissioner Justice?
So, thank you. With this, I would assume this is coming off the off-the-top shared portion of the economic development fund?
Yes.
If we go down this path?
It would.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I do.
Commissioner Welch?
All right, thank you. When does the, this committee that governs or recommends, thank you, the allocation of the off-the-top, when do they start meeting?
Our, the initial meeting will be on March the 25th, and that'll be for organizational purposes. We've engaged a consultant to take a look at initially the housing portion, because half of the money in the resolution from, from our last meeting together was set aside for housing. So we're going to do a study of where the needs are for housing. And then a future task of that consulting group will be to help draft some guidelines. The goal is to have that joint review committee approve the guidelines by August and bring them to you by your September meetings.
Okay. Well, I, I'm getting used to our agenda review process where we had discussions about this. And I think we had a good discussion. I support this. I think it's a good, strong partnership. It's been a part of our strategic direction for a while. We are adjusting because we didn't sell the Star Center as we initially intended to. But I, you know, I support all three of the options you mentioned. The pennies there is, as a funding source, but I'd still would go after private sector and certainly still go after some state support. But I think this is a partnership that makes sense and fits into our strategic plan. And as you mentioned at, at the agenda briefing, we did ask the mayor not to move forward with kind of repurposing that, that land. So I, I think we ought to move forward with this and I support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers, and then...
Yeah, well, I appreciate the opportunity that we have in front of us. I'm a little bit uncomfortable. I'm a little uncomfortable, in our meeting the other day, we were talking an awful lot about what this particular venture is doing versus what other things that we're trying to do around the county.
Yes.
For the same types of folks that are entrepreneurial in nature, but this is different. The fact that we don't have this money available concerns me. It, it seems like we ought to be maybe rethinking the, the size and scope of the project and maybe kind of bringing it down a little bit. So I, I'm just, I'm just very uncomfortable with the status of the funding. I guess we can approve it, and then we can turn, you know, say no later if we can't get the funding, which seems a little disingenuous to me. So I'm really having a hard time getting my arms around this and supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Understandable. The, what we have is an opportunity before us. We've gotten a letter of further consideration from the U.S. Economic Development Administration, and they're willing, we requested 9 million as the initial grant application with your $3 million match. They've come back after analyzing all of the applicants from around the country. There's a limited pot of money, and they're willing to give us 7.5 million if we're willing to increase the match to 4.5. The timing for that is we have to tell them one way or the other by March the 18th. So the previous grant process that we went through, they were only able to give, and their normal standard operation is 20% match. They're giving a 62% match. And now, because of the Irma funds, Hurricane Irma funding. Now, we, we can relook at it, but they won't let us downsize this project. What they've approved is the project that was presented to them. And we've already asked them about downsizing and adjusting based on the reduced funding. And they said, no, they, what they funded is the project because of the ability to ultimately get to self-sustaining nature. And any smaller square footage, our consultants say, won't possibly get to the point where they could fund themselves out of program rents. So that's kind of where we're set now. We could relook at it, but we would have to start over with zero money and work our way back up again.
But that's where we are now, anyway.
Yes.
At zero money. Because we didn't, the project was supposed to be funded by one of our other economic development projects that we have, that was supposed to sell. Those funds were supposed to be for this project. That's a lot of money to come up with. And certainly, well, in any event, as I said, I'm uncomfortable where we are right now. Thank you.
I want to note that in the financial background, in case you all didn't see that, we had a surplus land on U.S. 19 sale, and it listed as 802,000. So I would assume that this would be one source for the funding.
Yes.
And as the county administrator looks at other properties that we own, which I know, which is underway at the present time, we may find that we have other lands that are surplus that could be used to finance this project. I had some initial reluctance about this, but the more I've thought about it, the fact that we only have to come up with $4.5 billion for a 45,000-square-foot building, I mean, that's, and the fact that our staff has, with Mike at the lead, and his wonderful staff have been working really hard on this project for four years?
At least. It's probably a little longer than...
A little longer than that.
Yeah. They, they moved into the, we, Toyd was selling the Star Center in FY15, so yeah, four to five years.
I think that they, the fact that they're bringing this in for a landing and to make this project a reality and to create such an innovative incubator here in Pinellas County is really, really a home run. So Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to support the program today, Mike, but with that said, I hate that word, but, however. I do have the same concerns as a couple of my colleagues have already mentioned about where the money is coming from, number one. And then, number two, I'm a little bit concerned about the kind of precedent that it sends for how we operate in terms of not defining the source of the money upfront. So I would like to have those questions answered before we actually write a check.
Definitely. And we will bring, at this point, once the, the grant is awarded, if we come back with, with a successful outcome today, we will have to negotiate an actual agreement with the U.S. Economic Development Administration. They normally require a lien on the property. We will have some kind of restrictive covenant here in Florida because there, it is illegal for us to do that in, by the state constitution. So we will be negotiating all of the details and terms and conditions of the agreement and the amounts and the funding sources, and that will come back to you again.
Thank you. And we do have, as Mike mentioned, the next penny. You know, we had a strong preference for funding economic development, and this is economic development. So I'm sure that you will examine every private source that you possibly can, and we could even do naming rights. There's a lot of different options that we could define the required funding. Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah, I just wanted to agree that it would be a shame to forfeit the 7.5 million after all this work. And it's a million and a half more than what we'd already decided we could do, so...
And I'm going to recognize Commissioner Eggers, but then the other part, I, I noticed that Tanya and Allison are here from the Tampa Bay Innovation Center. Did you want to speak? So Tanya Elmore, and if you want to...
Did you want to recognize Commissioner yourself?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Then I'm going to have Commissioner Eggers speak.
Understood. Good afternoon. I'm Allison Barlow. I'm the Executive Director of the St. Petersburg Innovation District, which is the geographical area where this property is located. And we work very closely with Tanya Elmore and the Tampa Bay Innovation Center. I've been in the role for a year and a half. The role of the Innovation District is to bring together 30-plus organizations around Pinellas County and around Tampa Bay to foster job growth through innovation. And that's also helping to grow entrepreneurs, attract talent, help our students here in the community learn about possible jobs in many of the target industries that we're trying to attract here. Marine science, life science, specialized manufacturing, creative art and design, and data analytics. One of the things that's exciting about this opportunity is it really gives us a place to bring a lot of these folks together. One of the partnerships Tanya and I are working on currently that we've got grand ideas that, how we might integrate into this future, is the smart cities. Many of you are familiar with smart city technology. The idea of using technology to solve business problems, but also community problems. So everything from how do we teach and educate our students to how do we provide safety and security? St. Petersburg was just named the only city in the state of Florida to join a national consortium of smart cities that are looking at what these all look like. And we're working with Tanya to try to integrate it into some of the efforts she's doing. One of the possibilities that we're going to be launching in the new year is looking at how we take our researchers and our technologists and our deep experts in the community and actually beam them or link them to kids in our classrooms. So there's a live, interactive opportunity where the researcher might be on a research vessel in Tampa Bay, but they're able to interact with the students in the moment. So that really will be a great partnership. And one of the things Tanya and I are looking at is smart city technology, the sensors, the data, everything that will come with this wave of a new capability needs workforce. And so what we would like to do also is create space for that. Bring people through, bring sensors, work with vendors and partners, and then educate folks in our community that can join that as a new opportunity. So thank you.
Tanya?
Good afternoon. Tanya Elmore, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Innovation Center. I wanted to just mention a concern you had about the size of the building. 45,000 square feet is the, the rendering that we have today. It may end up being around 40,000. If that building is 40,000 square feet, and I went and had our consultant run the numbers again, each year, starting at year one, that should be about a $70 million impact back to the community. Also, if it's not, if it's not any small, if it's not any larger or any smaller than, it has to be 35,000 square feet in order to make an impact in the community. So if you have a co-working space that's 5,000 square feet and 10,000 square feet, and they're all spread throughout the county, they're not going to have an impact like an innovation center would have. So that's why we have the size of the building that we do. The additional 50,000, 15,000 square feet will also allow us to bring in corporate innovation partners. Some of them have softly committed to lending their name to the building and giving us some private sector funding. It's kind of the cart before the horse. Until we have the package rolled up nicely and we know the building and the funding is in place, then we can get the corporate money. And that's about a two-year ask from some of them, what they would comment on board with. And I just want to be able to answer those questions right now.
So who else are you engaging throughout Pinellas County?
The private companies, I'd rather not share.
I mean, I thought, other economic development partners or...
Well, of course, the cities. The cities, the different cities, and I've had conversations with Largo initially and Safety Harbor and some of the other communities, so I need to follow back up with that. But I've also, we had some initial conversations, but those have been on hold to see how the funding went with the EDA and how the county has that additional matching money. So definitely, when we get the package all done, we want to go back out and have a collaborative engagement with all of our partners to see what else this center can be. I mean, of course, the Innovation District is one partner, the universities are another partner, and so forth.
Commissioner Eggers?
Thank you. Yeah, just, you know, when we, when we were looking at this project, or we have been looking at this project, there was a, the, we had a $10 million asset that was going to be sold and cash available for that project. And all along, we've been somewhat too very committed to the concept of this project. So I think, you know, that, let's take that off the board for conversation. What we're talking about is really trying to find four and a half, four and a half million dollars, when, when we have our own challenges right now, and there is a lot of questions with regards to the economic committee that's going to be getting together and the kind of thing that we're looking at. This wasn't even on our agenda when we're talking to our residents about how to use those funds. When we were talking to them about what we were talking, going to do with economic development funds, what we were going to do with all of our penny money, spending that penny money on this project was not on there. So again, I think we've changed our, our tune here. And I, I'm just concerned that we're, we're going down a path that's just a little bit uncomfortable. That's all. And I, again, not necessarily to the type of the project that we're talking about, but... So I guess my question to you, Mike, wherever you are, is what are we approving today and what's our commitment? I hear Commissioner Long saying, okay for today, but there's still another day that we have to still... I mean, I want them to understand that we're going forward with this with the hope of finding the funds, not that we're approving it and it's a done deal. So if you could please...
Well, what we do need, in terms of a letter from you all, is that there is a backstop for the 4.5 million dollars. And that would be in order to receive the, the funding itself. Now, what we, what we can do from there is go and look at other possible sources and, you know, try to raise funds from the legislature and from the private sector. And then, as you mentioned, the money from the Florida Highway Patrol sale, potential other sales. The, the funding from the penny, again, the, even with the half of the annual money is $8.3 million a year from 2020 through, you know, 2030. So we're talking half of, half of one year of the money that's available to us. So it is, there are sources of funds. There was some money in excess of the budget last year due to the, the Amendment 1 ruling in favor. We had some money set aside for that. So there is general fund dollars available, but I believe that we should use the penny sources and work through the Joint Review Committee to try to take that out of the penny and not out of general fund.
Let me ask.
So the backstop, so the backstop that you say is any number of funds that are available, but nothing specifically?
Exactly. But we do need to have that assurance to the EDA. Now, when they come back and we negotiate and we bring you the final amount, if you're not satisfied at that time, you still have another shot at it to, to vote it down. So we, we will bring you an agreement. And if you can't agree to what we've negotiated, then that's up to you as well.
But, but that doesn't typically include the price at that point, the dollars. We're talking about every other item.
Yes.
So if we find that we're, we're not comfortable with where we're getting the money?
The sooner we let the Economic Development Administration know, the better, because, you know, we are, we are taking advantage of an opportunity, a $7.5 million opportunity from the federal government. If we turn this down now or in the future, we'll have difficulty getting other Economic Development Administration grants. We've gone down this road. We got a full approval last time, and then the governor vetoed part of the, the match that we had back then. And so we, we weren't able to continue. Then we went back with the same type of application with this Irma funds, and we've made it this far. So I don't think we'd have another opportunity in the near future if, if this were turned down. But it can be turned down.
Mike, but is there a difference between the timeframe to approve, to backstop the monies, and a different time for the actual agreement itself? I mean, it just sounded like you said we needed to... I mean, it just sounded like you said we needed to let them know pretty quickly about the money, but that's different than the deal? Or is it one of the same?
Right. What will happen on, before March the 18th, we have to assemble a few other items to get assurances from the city and so on that they're donating the lands. We'll have this entire package that will answer all the questions that they had during that further consideration letter. And one of those questions is, will you increase the amount of that local match from three million to four and a half million? And we intend to be very general in where we come up with that money. But it will still be an assurance from the county commission that we're good for the four and a half million if, if they come up with a seven and a half.
And then the rest of the, the rest of the agreement is something that will take some time to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a different take on this. I'm looking at the penny for Pinellas description of the 165 million, which we split in half. Eighty-two and a half million for housing, eighty-two and a half for economic development. And the line simply says, "Infrastructure supporting economic development and housing." We intentionally didn't have a laundry list of projects. We had a few high priority projects, but we left it broad. And I'm very comfortable, this is economic development infrastructure. And so I would view that as the backstop, the primary, and still try to go back and get legislative support, private sector support. But in my opinion, that is what the penny entailed when we went out to the voters. Certainly when I talk to folks, just like the housing. You know, we haven't gone through that process for housing, but I think we're telling everybody that eighty-two and a half is going to go for housing in this county. I view the, the economic development the same way. So I do see that as a source that we have. And on the other hand, you know, we did kind of change positions on the Star Center. We decided that strategically, we not, we not want to keep that asset because the bids that came in, the offers were substantially lower than we thought. So we are keeping a big asset over there and shifting where we're going to fund this from. I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
And I concur completely with you, Commissioner Welch. If you think about some of the conversations we had, we talked about scraping land and then being able to use that land for creating high-wage jobs. Well, this is already scraped land, and it's available for us as a partnership with the City of St. Petersburg. And we, by creating this innovation center, we are going to have the future for high-wage paying jobs and the smart city and all of the other things that I think are critically important to the county. And I never wanted to sell the Star Center because I saw it as a productive asset that we have. So the fact that, you know, we were not successful in getting the dollars of what the market value of that property is worth, I think we were smart to hold on to it and look at it as another asset that we can use to create those high-wage paying jobs and keep the high-wage paying jobs that are there right now. So Commissioner Gerard?
I just wanted to affirm what Mike was saying about going after this grant later or going after money from the same source later. If we turn it down again, is not going to work. I mean, as somebody who applies for federal funds all the times, the other thing is that local match is just that. It doesn't, they don't care where the money comes from. They care that we've committed it. So it doesn't, they don't care what pot it's coming from, or even if it comes from the legislature. If it's local match, it's local match. And I do consider it economic development. We're creating jobs here if we're helping these businesses to get up and running.
Do we have a process on the economic development side, a committee that's going to be going through and making suggestions, recommendations for the expenditures of those funds for housing and for economic development?
We do, in part. Jake, do you want to?
We do. The inter-local agreement that you entered into with the 24 municipalities that allowed the county in the first place to take the money off the top. Keep in mind that inter-local agreement is what allows you to vary the statutory formula. That inter-local agreement provides for the Joint Review Committee that Mike was referring to earlier. And that committee, as Mike said, is going to be meeting for the first time a little bit later this month. It's representative from all of the municipalities with required expertise. So some are going to be housing experts, some will be more economic development experts. It mirrors the composition of Ford Pinellas. And that committee is going to establish guidelines for the use of that money that comes off the top. So that's, I think, one of the only real limitations, if it even is a limitation, that we would see in regard to that money is the expenditure of it is going to need to be in conformance with the guidelines established by that committee.
And let me say that we all were sent a copy of who's on that joint review committee a couple of weeks ago or last week. And they've kind of set it up similar to how we have Ford Pinellas set up as far as representation. So three from Pinellas County, two from St. Petersburg, one from Clearwater, one from Dunedin, one from Largo, one from Pinellas Park, one that represents inner Pinellas County, Bel Air, Bel Air Bluffs, Gulfport, Kennesaw City, Seminole, and South Pasadena. And then we have the Beach Communities. And then we have the Old Smar Safety Harbor and Tarpon Springs. So I think that committee will be really instrumental in helping us do this. And it's also a great, when you have your meeting, to talk, to also talk about the center and how it is going to, and it may be located in St. Petersburg, but it represents and it encompasses all of Pinellas County.
It does. And they'll be, in fact, clients are currently in the downtown 501 building that have residents in Lakeland, Sarasota, and beyond. So it is, and this new 45,000-square-foot purpose-built facility will be an attractor from all over the country. I would expect people to actually move here in order to take advantage of the facility and the resources that go with it. It's going to be a tremendous opportunity to give us a competitive advantage over other cities who are trying to do entrepreneurship. And ultimately, the Joint Review Committee decisions will be your decisions. They are simply an advisory board. You are the only body that decides how to spend the dollars from that countywide set aside.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Are we ready to take a vote?
I'd move approval, Madam Chair.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Welch and second by Commissioner Long. And as we're going through the voting, oops, procedures, I want to thank the economic development staff led by Mike Mydell for the years of hard efforts in this regard. And I am very excited about what's going to happen. So thank you. Okay. I didn't see the-
Five to two.
Was it unanimous?
Five to two.
That was five to two. I'm sorry.
Five to two.
Five to two, okay. The dissenting votes being Commissioner Eggers and Commissioner Peters. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 16.
Item 16 is an increase to a contract with RJP Enterprises for a recurrence for guardrail material and services.
Move approval?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Gerard. Okay, unanimous vote. Agenda Item 17?
Agenda Item 17 is a change order number one with Chemtrade Chemicals for annual requirements for liquid aluminum sulfate. This was purchased through the Tampa Bay Area Purchasing Cooperative Contract.
Move approval?
Second.
I just have a question about this. Interesting, I want to note that the change in this is due to governmental tariffs. So are we, is this, are these chemicals imported from China?
Alan? Joe?
Sorry, just, if you don't know, that's fine. But I was just thinking where, you know, I read all the background, but it didn't say where the chemicals were coming from, so.
Joel, from the purchasing department. Commissioner, to my knowledge, they're not from China. I believe they are from the United States, these chemicals. The actual material that makes the chemicals.
Well, look at the impacts.
Yeah, absolutely.
More than just the private sector. Okay. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, Commissioner Long and second by, I think it was Commissioner-
Commissioner Peters.
Peters. Okay. Voting ballot, please. Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Agenda Item 18?
Under County Administrator miscellaneous, I think I just wanted to kind of outline some of the regional efforts that I'm continuing to build with partnerships. You know, been very active in meeting with like the Big C and with the, some of our chambers of commerce, with Ford Pinellas, with PSTA, to continue some of the board's strategic priorities, but to put in place kind of a foundational issue to address some of your highest priorities being transportation, affordable housing, mental health, and, and other things. So again, we're, I think we're moving in the right direction. We certainly, I'm very appreciative of people willing to reach out, invite me to, you know, talk with them and work with them and kind of give me the backstop, you know, to what they do and how we can work together. So it's going well, but I, you know, there's a lot more to do.
Okay. Well, there will always be lots more to do. But thank you for your efforts so far. We really appreciate it.
We don't want you to be bored.
I'm not.
We didn't think you would be. But you're already doing tremendous things, so thank you very much. Moving on to County Attorney, number 19?
Under item number 19, I'm asking for your authority to initiate litigation in the case as referenced on the agenda.
Okay. Is there any questions? Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Long. Okay, unanimous approval. Agenda Item 20?
Under 20, again, asking for the board's approval to initiate litigation as referenced under the agenda items.
Move approval? Second. Motion by Commissioner Long and second by Commissioner Gerard. Okay, unanimous approval. Do you have any miscellaneous under 21?
I do not.
Okay. Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item 22. It's Career Source Pinellas.
Agenda Item 22 is an agreement between Pinellas County Government and WorkNet Pinellas, our career source. This is a result of revisions that were recommended. You did appoint an ad hoc committee that reviewed and made recommended changes to the agreement, and it's here for your review and approval.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Gerard, and your, for your leadership in this group. And does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Mike for all his hard work on this. I managed to miss every one of those meetings. Maybe you guys did that on purpose, I'm not sure. But that's all. Yeah, I think we've made some progress here.
Good. I think that the amendments to the bylaws and the agreement that you've made some tremendous progress. And thank you, Jennifer, as well. So could I have a motion, please?
I have one.
Okay.
One question, and I echo your kudos to Commissioner Gerard on your labor of love and all the support from staff. The audit committee changes, which were sorely needed. Have we appointed those folks yet, or are we going to do that subsequent to this?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The audit committee, there are two appointees by the BCC.
No, we have not appointed those people yet.
And will that go through our regular process of advertising and folks applying online?
Good question. Mike?
It should. And I do believe there's a reference in, and Mike could probably say for certain, in the bylaws, I believe, that, that would require adherence to the counties.
Yeah, the, the new bylaws do have two positions that are appointed by the Board of County Commissioners that are not members of the Board of C-Spin. So this would be outside experts. And we have posted that on the, the county application website. And to date, we have not received any applications. So that's been the hard part of it. But, but we do have quorum with the three named members in the, in the bylaws. So, but it is important, I think, to have those five members on the board. We'll continue to try to recruit for those two positions.
So go talk to your friends who are finance geeks and-
Madam Chair?
No need to be repetitive. It's like finance and geek, so.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On the issue of the attorney, does anything in this speak to, you know, evaluations for the attorney? The hiring process? Is this the right document for that?
I was going to ask the same question.
And I am kind of curious. I talked to Mr. Geller on the phone the other day. And I spoke to him about the issue of the attorney since it came up during the work session. And so it's, you know, I guess it's up to the C-Spin Board, but we could send a message that if it's timely, and it may not be timely given the current investigations into Career Source to change attorneys, but at the appropriate time, it probably is time to go out for an RFP.
Yeah, the, the current agreement with Trenton Law is terminable at will by either party. So we, and it has been in place since 2006. As far as I know, there's never been a formal evaluation of the county attorney. I mean, of the, sorry, of the, we do it every year of the county attorney.
Do it to her all the time.
No problem there. But of, of the General Counsel for the Career Source Board. But the, the new bylaws and the inter-local agreement do both refer to a selection committee that would select a new General Counsel and a new Executive Director in the event of, of an absence. So I've been a vacancy in that position. So we, we could, you know, at any time, the, the Board of Career Source could terminate that relationship, and that would immediately start the search process that is outlined in the bylaws.
Well, one issue, problem that we've had, and we had it with the Audit Committee. We had that issue back in 2016 where the external auditor was fired without consent or even notification of the Audit Committee. Then it needs to be clear the attorney reports through the Board and not to the CEO.
Correct.
And so is that, does that say that anywhere?
It, well, it does say that the full board, not just the executive committee, but the full board would have to vote on removal or assignment of the General Counsel as well as the Executive Director. So instead of previously, it could have been, well, and previously, it may have been done by the Executive Director.
That's not quite what I'm looking for, though. I need something that says, just like Jewel reports to us, you know, that line of, of who the attorney reports to needs to be clarified, I think. As well as a routine evaluation as well. So I don't know if it's too late to-
Madam Chair? Well, I'd like, let's let Commissioner Gerard speak to the-
I would agree with you, and I, yes. I thought I made those points clear, but there was not a whole lot of support for that particularly from those that are not part of the county commission. Their bylaws, I totally agree and will keep pushing for annual evaluations on this person because never had one, 13 years.
And, and while these are their bylaws, your new inter-local agreement makes the bylaws for Career Source subject to the approval of the county commission.
And we can, we ought to approve them today if we don't want to.
We could add, Jewel, could we add the, add and/or either send a letter from the chair's office requesting that an annual evaluation be made as well as a consideration for going out for an RFP for legal services? Well, and I think Commissioner- The question is for Jewel.
Sorry.
I certainly think you could make your approval on the bylaws. You know, I would recommend that you go ahead and approve the inter-local agreement. And both of these have been approved by the Career Source Board, is that my under?
Yes.
What I'd recommend is you go ahead and approve the inter-local agreement, which does put that mechanism into place to make the bylaws subject to county commission approval. And you could, you could approve the bylaws contingent on that change being agreed to and made by them. In fact, we could make your approval here today to include that change. It would have to go back to the Career Source Board for their approval. You could make it contingent upon, you could make your approval contingent upon them accepting that change. I mean, I think there are a couple of mechanisms we could use to make it clear that you want a formal evaluation of the attorney. I think so. And you could also ask to make it clear that that person reports either to the full board, to the executive committee in the absence of the full board, or some of the other provisions that we've written into this document. Because that is something that we obviously tried to be mindful of. I think in the drafting of the inter-local, we were somewhat more mindful of the Audit Committee and the engagement of that firm because of what we'd seen happen in the past, making it very clear that that firm reported to the board.
And that, if I may, Madam Chair, really is the issue-
Sure.
Was the attorney's role during that Audit Committee problem. That reporting relationship was not clear. In fact, it worked opposite of the way it should have worked. So I, I agree if we could get the annual evaluation and the clarification of the reporting relationship in the bylaws, you know, that's the only way I could support this.
Okay. Commissioner Long, and then Commissioner Gerard, and then-
Thank you.
Commissioner Eggers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I had the exact same comments. I had the exact same comments on my lips that Commissioner Welch just articulated, only I probably would have said it much stronger than he did, because a lot of the issues that we had were clearly the result of the comments and the advice and the whatever you call it that he was giving to that Board, and there was never any really sound loyalty to the taxpayers and the citizens of this county or this region. And I really do not, I would be very reluctant to see us go forward and approve the bylaws without some of the recommendations that Jewel has already just offered, because I think we're just asking for trouble if we do that.
Commissioner Gerard.
Yes, and I would agree that some of the issues that have come up in the past couple of years have been because those lines of authority were not clear, and we weren't quite sure who was calling the shots over there. I would suggest, since there seems to be consensus that we don't like the way it's written, that we say we're not going to approve it the way it is right now, and because I counted three different changes that we want to put in there, and I don't think we can tinker with that right now.
Sure.
I think it ought to come back to us.
And that may be one thing you want to consider, proving the interlocal agreement. Withholding approval of the bylaws.
I agree with that.
We could make some changes so that everybody can see in black and white how they read. And Mike or Commissioner Gerard, you may know if there's any time sensitivity to getting the bylaws adopted.
No, other than implementing, and many of the new policies and the bylaws have already been implemented by Board decisions as well.
And you could certainly approve the interlocal, withhold approval of the bylaws, recognizing the fact that there are some changes that we want to make, and we could make those very quickly.
And we might even suggest, I mean, I find it pretty amazing that we have a letter of engagement from 2006, and that's all we've ever had in writing. The rate hasn't changed, we haven't had an evaluation, they haven't reviewed whether it's meeting their needs or not. So, it may be something in there about just reviewing the contract and reaffirming or whatever. Or no, I should, that's the case.
Well, Fisher Eggers was next.
No, I think the last couple of comments kind of summarized my feeling. I think we just ought to send it back and have them address that. I was just sitting here going through the bylaws real quickly, and a lot, most of what's in there is directed at Board officers and the Board, and I'm not, again, I'm, I kind of, there's very little about.
Page 14.
Yeah, page, I was just.
I'm on the strike at the red line.
Yeah, the chief executive, executive director and legal counsel.
And legal counsel selection committee. That's in the interlocal.
But I think, yeah.
It sets more of a process rather than it does rule criteria, for instance, for how you would select and go through the process. So, we can certainly make those suggestions. You know, it's a little bit different in how we handle outside counsel here, because you have an in-house attorney that is constantly assessing the performance of our outside counsel, whereas it's a different setup there. So, it would, I think, be a wise procedure to write in to here where there is not a normal evaluation process that's occurring on a regular basis.
So, it sounds like we might, the way to proceed at this point is to go ahead and approve the interlocal, and revise the bylaws and bring that back at another date. So, can I have a motion to that in regard?
Quick question. Are we saying in the bylaws that we agree that the attorney that's hired is hired by a group, say, the Board, and is evaluated by the Board and can be fired by the Board? Is that kind of what we're saying, and we'd like them to address it that way? I mean, that's what I feel, but.
Well, what I'm hearing, if I could summarize, that you would like to see in changes, is to make it clear that the attorney reports to the Board.
What Board?
The Career Source Full Board. And the bylaws do provide that when necessary, the Executive Committee can make decisions, but it goes back to a full discussion before the Board. So, just to be clear, that the bylaws do provide for that. So, you would have an attorney reporting to the full Board, some mechanism for a periodic review of performance, and a review of the terms of the contract.
What about hiring and firing?
And that.
The committee already.
Yes, the committee has that, but we can make it more abundantly clear.
You mean, the whole Board would be responsible?
I think when I say that they would report to the Board, that's implicit, but we can make it abundantly clear in the bylaws.
Right.
Just want to make sure we were clear on that. Thank you.
So, do I have a motion?
Move approval of the interlocal agreement.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Peters, and the motion made by Commissioner Gerard. Commissioner Gerard, the motion, second is by Commissioner Peters.
Is this considered approved as amended?
No, it's just the interlocal agreement. There's two different, there's interlocal, and then there's the bylaws. We'll address the bylaws next.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we going to have a separate motion then on the?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to make it clear.
Yeah, okay.
I'm a yes, somehow I got unjoined, but I'm a yes.
Okay, unanimous approval of the interlocal agreement. I'd like another motion that directs the county attorney to look at the bylaws and to make the necessary changes to reflect the legal counsel reporting to the Board, a process for evaluation for the legal counsel, and any other matters you think are pertinent towards making this work properly in the bylaws.
So, moved.
I move that, and exactly what you said.
Is that also kind of implied that the Executive Director as well goes through the same?
I would think that it should apply to the Executive Director. I actually had that thought earlier, so.
Already.
We'll clarify, it'll apply to the Executive Director as well as to the legal counsel.
Okay.
Okay. And I think Commissioner Gerard actually made the motion, so I'm, I'll say the second is by Commissioner Long. And again, you know, two different motions, even though it was one agenda item, and they'll need to be reflected, Michael, in the minutes that way.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, unanimous approval, and we will now move on to agenda item 23.
Item 23 is a designation as local workforce area being Career Source Pinellas under the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Long and a second by Commissioner Peters. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick question. I'm sorry. We talked in the meeting the other day about, there were some concerns about putting our stamp on the fact that it exceeded levels of performance during the reporting period. So, I couldn't remember how we ended up our conversation to either get comfortable with that or not get comfortable with it, so.
And originally, and maybe the way to address it, if you pull up the application for the subsequent local workforce development area designation, it specifically talks about perform successfully means the local workforce development area met or exceeded the adjusted levels of performance for primary indicators of performance for the last two consecutive years, for which data is available, and the local area has not failed the same individual measure for the last two consecutive program years. The second is sustained financial fiscal integrity, meaning that the Secretary of Labor has not made a formal determination during either of the last two consecutive years preceding the determination regarding such integrity, that either the grant recipient or the administrative entity of the area has misexpended funds provided. So, Jennifer, maybe you want to come up and address that, but it doesn't leave too much room for me to change the language or sign it. But what I was thinking I'd like to do is I could add a cover letter for when we return this and say that we understand that this is the required language. Would that be acceptable, Jennifer?
That would be acceptable, yes. And these are the very specific criteria. We have met or exceeded performance, and we do meet sustained fiscal integrity based on this definition. And this is a requirement in order to maintain our designation as a local workforce development Board area, and without this, we do not exist. So, it is critically important as we move forward to offer adult dislocated worker and youth funds in this Pinellas County area.
So.
And we'll just not interrupt, but we really can't change the language of this because it is stated in the Workforce Investment Opportunity Law. It is part of a TEGLE, which is the policy the Department of Labor issues, and it is also part of Career Source Florida's administrative policy. So, they've locked the language down pretty nicely.
Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I share Commissioner Eggers' concerns. I see we added the first bullet, I think.
Yes.
It says, "The language on the application form is controlled by state and federal law."
Yes, sir.
This is covering FY '17 and '18. It ends July.
This year.
Okay. And again, the Board members that we placed there, the job that you're doing with your staff, y'all are turning that organization around, Commissioner Gerard, of course. But there are still things we don't know about what actually happened before you became the CEO, as a CEO or president. So, that statement on itself, we don't really know what the exact performance numbers are, given the investigations that are going on about, you know, how performance was bumped up allegedly. So, you know, I understand we have to use that language, but I guess what I'm doing now is stating for the record that there are things we don't know, and they are currently being investigated. So, again, no reflection on you and the job you're doing, but I need to say that for the record, because we simply don't know what those investigations are going to find.
And somehow I'll incorporate that into a cover letter, so that it clearly shows that, you know, we are aware of all of this and are somewhat sensitized to it. I guess the only question that I might ask Jewel is, by signing this, do we put ourselves in any, to any liability and any?
The county is already liable for these funds, so I would say you do not create any additional liability.
Okay.
And I must say that the Department of Economic Opportunity is the organization that outlines our meet and exceed performance levels, so they're the ones that have issued that report for this time period, and they will be joining us on March 20th for the Board meeting to present the performance information. So, that is designated by DEO, and we have not had the designation of anything other than fiscal integrity from the U.S. Department of Labor as of today.
All right. Commissioner. And I'm sure there'll be some pointed questions to the DEO during that meeting, because we have heard nothing from them.
And that's your March 20th meeting. Okay. Okay, do I, I can't, did I get a motion already on this one?
Commissioner Long and Commissioner Peters.
Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and pull up the voting cards, please. Thank you, Michael. When we get into a lot of discussion, then I should have written down on my list. Okay, moving on to agenda item 24.
Item 24 is a resolution authorizing amendments to the Lehman Community Redevelopment Area Plan, including updating tax increment finance and our tax increment revenue projections and various tax amendments, including updates to the Strategic Action Plan and spending budget.
Move to approve. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Peters' motion, and Commissioner Justice, second. Moving on to agenda item 25.
Item 25 is a resolution delegating certain approval authorities to, for, of the Pinellas County Redevelopment Agency to the county administrator. This is consistent with other approval authorities.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Gerard and second by Commissioner Long. Unanimous vote of approval. Agenda item 26.
I have no additional reports.
Madam Chair, just wanted to recognize Steve Cleveland and all the great work he's doing with the CRA. He's in the audience today. Thank you, Steve.
I missed Steve in the audience, sorry. Thank you very much. We really appreciate everything that you all are doing. And Commissioner Justice as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you beat me to it. I did want to make a comment and thank Commissioner Justice for his leadership, and I hope I don't start just rambling like the old guy up here over the next year and a half. But when you think back to when Lehman Park, that 54th Avenue, became an actual park under Steve Spratt, with, under the urging of Ray Neri, of course, you know, that was a big achievement in Lehman. And then there were fire hydrants and the whole annexation issue, Fire Station 18, the Lehman Family Center. And now, in large part, thanks to Commissioner Justice's leadership, you've got the Lehman Exchange, you've got all the other great things that are happening out there, the Ray Neri Park. So, I just want to thank you for the passion you've brought to that, and you've built on the vision of Mr. Ray Neri, and I know he's looking down, and he's proud and thankful of that. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
However, I would be remiss without recognizing your previous leadership.
That was foundational stuff, but he's taking it to another level.
You were setting the foundation, and he's building the buildings.
He's taking it to another level, so thank you.
And certainly, I'd like to take credit for all of it, and I probably will in the next 14 months. But it's obviously, we have a lot of great working staff, and our previous administrator, Mr. Wood, had really pushed hard for the funding on the exchange and the property, but you can see the planning staff that we've got in the audience, Mr. Moore and everyone who's really doing all the groundwork, so we appreciate that.
It's an exciting time in Pinellas County to be having our first CRA and seeing the successes already, so I concur. Thank you to Christopher and our staff.
Yeah, just a little comment. I agree with those comments completely about Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Justice, but I think it really, I don't think should be understated. It should be overstated, if anything, the importance of getting that CRA established, because when it comes to establishing a CRA, we have now multiple criteria to determine whether it's a 95%, 75%, or 50% TIF measuring stick. And this one really fits what the original intent of CRAs was, going into areas and having a blighted community and having an opportunity, blighted is a term that's given, but, and having an opportunity to turn it around and to make it into a kind of an incredible community in its own right, and what it should have been anyway, but we've given that opportunity with some additional focused funding to make it happen. And I think this is, this really fits, of all the CRAs, this fits really, really well. I'm not saying that the others don't, but this one really fits good. So, congratulations to all of you who really led the way years back and really proud to be a part of it.
Thank you. Okay, 26, any administrator reports? All right, citizens to be heard. Thanks. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good, how are you?
David Lamaca, Executive Director of Neighborhood Care Network, and I am just here for a couple of reasons. I'll be very brief. First of all, on behalf of the 4,000 seniors that we, that your funding recently helped provide hot meals to, we need to make sure that message gets loud and clear to you guys. That's very, very appreciated. There were 1,000 people on a waiting list not long ago for one hot meal a day, delivered by a trained volunteer, not just through the mail, and it's important to know that it's a great way for a senior to get a meal and to get a meal and to not be socially isolated. Secondly, the week of March 18 through 22nd is March for Meals Month. This is the one time of year that everybody gets a chance to deliver a meal, even if it's one or for an hour, one day, pick an hour of the whole week. Even it could be any time during the year, we'll make it work, but that's just the year that Meals on Wheels America does a national designation. I know a number of you have signed up for it already, and we very much appreciate that. More we could see, but beyond that, we had a number of dignitaries say we could come the next week or the following week. We've already accommodated them, so we want to make sure we hear that. And to Administrator Burton, I want to applaud your efforts. We've been trying also to integrate services with PSTA. Last, or two weeks ago at your meeting, when somebody commented to Mr. Eggers about transportation issues and some cutbacks, but we've been able to reach out to them following the meeting and send them to provide transportation to those individuals, because those resources are there, and those resources have been made available by your funds. We just always strive to make sure we get that message out. So, quickly, just wanted to thank everybody, get it on public record, that we're reaching out there and trying to provide and integrate, working with the Housing Authority, working with PSTA, working with Community Health Centers of Pinellas County. with PSTA, working with Community Health Centers of Pinellas County, working with Gulf Coast Family Jewish, I always forget their names, mental health centers and behavioral health centers, trying to integrate senior services with them, so we're not just an island doing just seniors, but those centers can integrate into senior services as well. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Rumble, Pinellas Trail North Loop placement.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to speak to you about the current plans of the Pinellas Trail down the Duke Energy easement. And I'm here for all the folks in my neighborhood and ninety-some percent who border the trail. And these folks have signed a petition that we started, and I've got over a hundred and fifty of your constituents that agree that they do not want it to come down the Duke Energy easement. So I proposed a better route going down Enterprise Road, which would link up to McMullen Booth Road, and there are existing sidewalks there. I do have pictures, it's a little bit hard for you to see from there maybe, but...
If you lay it flat, see where the seal is?
Yeah.
Just put it down as if we're facing you and you were looking at it, and then they can project it.
Facing me or you?
Facing you, as if, just as you see it.
Gotcha.
We'll see it.
Okay, great.
There we go.
Okay, so basically, current is coming from the countryside crossing on US nineteen and routing down the Duke Energy easement. And basically, there's about a hundred and sixty homes and many condos and apartments along the way. And all these folks concur that they do not want this trail coming down there for the many reasons that I have on my petition. So I propose this other route that's really easy and very cheap. You're gonna save probably half the money to run it right down Enterprise Road and down McMullen Booth. And this is very similar to where it connects up in East Lake. It's running aside East Lake Road, which turns into McMullen Booth Road, and it's virtually the same thing, probably half the cost. So that's basically it. And I hope you will look at my petition and consider that we have over a hundred and fifty people that agree that this is not the route that they want. And basically, I believe that this was designed back in two thousand or so. And now, times have changed. We've almost doubled the population, traffic, and we're worried about the multitude of things that I have in the petition there. So if you'll please read the petition, and I hope that you'll consider revoting and rethinking the direction that we're gonna route this trail. I'm not against the trail at all, I'm just, we're just not happy with where you're placing it at this point.
Madam Chair? Yes.
I would just like to share with you that many, many years ago, when Mary Grizzle was in the Florida Senate, she was the one who originally made the trail possible because they turned what had been a railroad track, this is behind the neighborhood where I lived, lived at the time and still do, only on a different section of the trail. And in the area where we are, the trail is like a living park. And most of the folks that live along that trail are families who have children that ride to the Catholic school down the street or go to mass down there, and, and you can get right up to the high school as well. So it has been, for as long as I've lived in the Seminole area, an integral part of the community. Just wanted you to have a different perspective.
I, and I understand what you're saying, and also the route that I'm giving you will also connect the Courtney Hamilton Trail at Gulf Bay Road and be able to run straight north and provide lots of access for all the churches and businesses and people to get to them via walking or bicycle. I think it's a better route altogether, and everybody tends to concur with me on that.
Well, thank you for your comments and bringing that forward today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I know that we had, we'll go back to our staff, but we had previously, through our Transportation Board call forward Pinellas, had reviewed different options in the countryside area. And so I will ask that this board receive an update as to those configurations, why they were chosen, and if there's any option to change it. I don't believe Enterprise was seriously, to McMullen Booth, was seriously considered. You noted that it would be less expensive. It would not because, not necessarily because we have to widen the sidewalks that exist on McMullen Booth to be the size of an adequate trail that allows bicyclists as well as pedestrians. But I know we seriously looked at Countryside Boulevard and at Landmark previously, so we'll try to get reacquainted as to why and how.
And those costs were less, too, those, the other two options that you mentioned there. And I'm almost sure that this is gonna come in less than both those. And you won't need stoplights put up for them either, so that will save half a million dollars via stoplights.
All right.
And so I'm just requesting that if, if y'all can take a look at the petition and please reconsider and re-vote on this.
Okay, thank you. We have another speaker.
Thank you.
Do you wanna hear him first, or do you wanna address?
I was just gonna address this issue. There is a full report on that. They did look at about five different options. I can certainly submit that back to the commission for your review.
Thank you.
I know Commissioner Eggers has been involved in it, asked for us to look at the public comment and the, the opportunities that we had for people to be able to share their thoughts on the different alternatives. We are pulling that up and looking at it. But this is also a project that's scheduled to go. It's scheduled for June construction, so it's, it's, it's there. So I will certainly pull that up and share and send that to you.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, thank you, Barry, for saying that, because when several folks started contacting me, including Mr. Rumble, and I wanted to get together and, and visit, because when people call and ask to meet, we do, I wanted to get some of that background. So a nice report has been put together that kinda gives that history and the alternatives that were looked at and why the one that was chosen was chosen. In addition to that, I've asked Barry to kind of look into the, the number of public engagements that we had. I don't mean public meetings that we had like here, but ones that we had in the community. Because a project like this, in today's term, in today's day, would have those public engagements. You would have meetings out there, maybe at the library in Clearwater, or maybe in a couple of HOAs, just to get resident input. So I just wanted to make sure that we'd gone through that process, and they're looking into that, and will come back whenever they have that information. So I think that was important and relevant before I got together to have a good conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Rumble. And next is Mr. Bressler, Scott Bressler, also on the Pinellas Trail issue.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for being casual. This is not normally how I would dress to come to the BCC meeting, but I was coming from a job site, so I apologize about that. Wanted also...
We're just glad you're here.
Thank you. And wanted to also share my appreciation for allowing us to speak. We, we know that Bruce and I, you know, and many others, know that the tough decisions that you each face on a monthly basis, daily basis, and we appreciate that and we certainly respect it. I'm here on the same topic because, and I would like to address the, the current number of petition signers. We haven't even physically gone door-to-door. I have no doubt in my mind it would be three hundred to three fifty or more. We're contacting only those property owners that border along the areas we're talking about. So when you factor that in, it's quite a number of people that are displeased. It's not just randomly homeowners within a mile radius or something like that. These are physically properties and bordering the areas we're talking about. The other thing I wanna mention is, especially where you were talking earlier about women being the majority on the board, hopefully that also brings an extra sensitivity. I would think most decisions come down to, especially, specifically this decision, comes down to number one, safety. Number two, cost, this is my guess, correct me if I'm wrong. And number three would be scenery slash aesthetics to the project. And it's, in my mind, undisputed what we're talking about here. I can't, because of the time, go into all the reasons. I would love to, but safety, number one, crossing three lanes each way at five eighty and then again at Curlew, when you have existing traffic lights already installed and paid for in intersections that, according to the current plan, will not be used. I don't understand that. Tremendous additional cost when you're talking about the current proposed route. The second thing is, I believe I said, safety and then cost. According to the Public Works Report that I received from Ms. McKibben, the report on page twenty-four, if you have the report that Bruce gave you, I think it's in the middle of page twenty-four, the page number's at the bottom, it says that the, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he gave it to you, the least expensive options are not what is currently proposed. The Duke Energy Power Line easement is the most expensive option. So again, I've talked about safety, the crossings, not using the existing intersections at Countryside Boulevard or Landmark or McMullen Booth. Now talking about the, the cost, and the third thing is the scenery. It is the, without a doubt, the least scenic route. You have no shade trees, you have nothing but, the third and most important thing is, it is in an unsupervised area. So it's not only a lack of scenery, it's also the back of people's residences, when they're gone all day at work, there's no public view. Every other trailer area that I can think of, you're public view. And that is a big thing for keeping people's behavior in check.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. I will say, a majority of the trail goes in people's backyards.
The majority? Okay.
A lot of it, Dunedin, Seminole.
St. Pete.
St. Pete. So, but we are, we do wanna hear what you have to say, and we'll be doing our homework further on this.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Next is Alexander Bame. Wants to talk about home and property liens. Hi.
This is all I, sorry, the way I'm showing up, I just got from work.
Here, how about if I use the old-fashioned way? I don't know how to stop it. Just turn it off. How do you turn it off?
Switch on the back.
It's in the back. Sorry.
I get extra time?
Sure you do.
Okay.
Hi.
I'll give you a few extra seconds for non-functioning timer.
Well, I'm Alexander Bame, and on October of last year, on the eighth, I purchased a property with the address that I put there, fifty-nine, twenty-nine, one hundred and forty-first Terrace North. It was a complete disaster. It's, it was a complete disaster for over ten years in that area, in that neighborhood. I purchased it with an idea that I could maybe fix it up or, or, you know, do something great for not just the neighborhood, maybe for myself. And I keep going through a lot of issues with it as far as the liens. There's over a million-some dollars in liens in this property. And before I purchased, I did a lien search, all the normal things, and I spoke with the magistrate liens, and they told me that I would, they will not discuss too much with me about what I can do, how to lower the liens, until I purchased the property. I did that. I purchased the property. They, still, they told me, well, now you have to clean it up before we can bring it to compliance, before we can discuss lien reductions. And on April of this year, on the fifteenth, I had a hearing about that, and they gave me ninety days. And, long story short, the thing was such a mess, as I was cleaning up, the thing just fell down, the building just, just fell down. I still cleaned it up. I probably have ten thousand dollars invested into it already, out of my money, you know? And I got into compliance, I called the city, you know, code enforcements, they looked into it, they said, thank you, thank you, thank you, just like all the neighbors have been. And recently, I got this letter saying that I pretty much demolished a home without a permit. There was no power there, no water, everything was just, it was just a disaster.
Could you put that on the seal, just as, so we could take a look at it, please?
And if may I add, hold on a second. Oh, if may I add, I, I understand that there's need to be permits pulled to do a demolition. I absolutely understand there's power, there's, there's water, there's sewer, that you can, you know, but hurt all these things and make even a bigger problem. There was, there's not even a meter box, it was completely cut out. The city knew about this, there was no water, there's a lien on the, for the water, water's completely cut off, the sewer was completely capped off. So even, I tried to get a permit to do a demolition, maybe you can see on your computer, I don't know. I decided it'd be better if I just tried to, you know, repair it, fix it all up and keep it standing. And, and the process of doing that, that's when it fell down.
Okay. Wilson, see Mr. Stowers over there? He or somebody from our staff will talk with you.
Please.
Yes.
Because I don't know what else to turn to.
I know.
It's been like five months.
Sometimes, that's why you're here today. Sometimes it's hard to find the right person, and then we can help you connect.
Okay.
So, thank you for the hard work that you're trying to do on this property and...
Yeah, I just, I can't go forward anymore, there's too much investment, you know?
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, next is David Ballard Geddes, Jr.
The meeting was going so good until now. David Ballard Geddes, Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Americana, Canada, America, Mexico, all-inclusive. There are to be no state governments and no county governments, and based on the reclaimed water variance application, no religion too. Imagine that. The intent is to dissolve this government and to assume separate but equal stations as powers among the earth, as watersheds. Regions shall be the authority and watershed districts shall be the rule. Americana, which brings us into shining light onto the powers shielded behind, hidden in and of and under this government, as self-evident, using this constitution as a whole, usefully, artfully, truthfully, in conquest of a larger picture. Americana, shapeshifted from its fortnited statehood into a politically laundered watershed operation, now to be inclusive of the whole continent. But before we get to Americana, the indigenous people of Guatemala, Nicaragua, and Honduras must first be removed by offering them a promise of false hope here in this land, falsely promising them liberty and freedom here in America, thereby making a vacancy down in that land, which roundabout is to be used to shelter the interests of our carpet-bagging legislation there in Central America, using Honduras as a new sanctuary for the criminal nature of our House of Representatives, using Guatemala as a new refuge, threatening sedition through the course of time, living off the milk and honey of Guatemala as the new hive of international criminal capitalism, simultaneously causing discourse and chaos, destruction in this land, slowly giving rise to Central America, hoping, intending on a future accord, hoping to retain future power and prestige as Americana, under the high seas act of political smoke and mirrors, now seen shining in and on its face. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Lenora Faulkner. And then thereafter is Greg Pound, and then that's all the cards that I have. I also had a, an email from a constituent asking us to make sure we speak into our microphones, because that is how they can hear us out in TV land. So everyone, please make sure you speak into your microphone. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioner Seal and your distinguished commission. This is a program from the nineteen forty-five Army-Navy game. I went a month before I was born. It was the game of the century. Thank you for your service. I am Lenora Faulkner from Madera Beach. I've been a Florida professional educator for fifty years, certified in biology, chemistry, mathematics, science, health education, middle school... mathematics, science, health education, middle schools, and the gifted. This is Women's History Month. I've always been a woman in a man's world. The aviators arrived at the U.S. Naval Academy. In the spring of 1945, Dad boarded a transport from Guam. His destination was the U.S. Naval Academy. My mother came from Ohio. I was made in America. We celebrated VE Day, VJ Day, the 100th anniversary of the Naval Academy. We traveled to the 1945 Army-Navy Game in Philadelphia, December 1st. 102,000 people were there. It was the game of the century. Army won. It was a month before I was born. I arrived January 3rd, 1946. I am me three, oldest of 80 million baby boomers, born into education excellence. I attended Catholic school, Pensacola Catholic High, University of Florida. Excellence, excellence, excellence. Dad was a Hellcat fighter pilot. Dad fought for public schools, not corporate education, Common Core, or charter schools. I collect documents concerning these problems. In 1967, I taught at Jefferson Junior High, a new school, a science school at Cape Kennedy. It was brand-new. It has so much science equipment that my mentor, the head of the Science Department, had to open boxes and set up teaching stations, including a weather station. This was my semester of student teaching. I taught the entire semester skipping college graduation at the University of Florida. My students' parents worked on the Apollo spacecraft. What is 21st Century Science in Pinellas? The Science Center and the Charter School, who is the principal? I have the 400-page document. I get my information from Mr. Wolf at the school administration building. I am asking Commissioner Gerard to email everyone here the first 10 pages of this document. You have a vested interest in the Science Center. This is Science in Pinellas County. I come from the Space Coast, and this is Science in Pinellas County, the 21st century. It will give you a unique...
Lenora, can you conclude, please, your time stop?
Oh, you, this will give you a unique view of charter schools. Thank you. God bless.
Greg Pound?
Can I just respond to something? Lenora, I just wanted to let you know that we, the Science Center is being sold. It is not going to be a charter school. That Career Source is not, is getting rid of the building.
Well, I'm just telling you, this is the model of all charter schools in the state of Florida. Thank you. God bless.
Okay.
Greg Pound, Pinellas County. Thank you, commissioners. I got my timer going, so I'll watch it. She made a statement that this is the, this is a man's world. The Bible says in Psalms 24, verse 1, "The earth is Yahweh's in the fullness thereof, and the world, and they, and the world, and they that dwell there." The Creator's not a man. God is Spirit, and those who worship Him go and worship Him in spirit and truth. I was up in Tallahassee this past week, and I followed a bill on the Bible put together by this lady right here. This is 317, you have to type it into the Florida, thefloridachannel.org, and it's called 317-19, Florida House Bill Pre-K Quality Subcommittee. There's a representative by name of Daniel, she's black African-American, and she's a Christian, which she states in her statement, and then she verses a Muslim representative by Eschka Maya over a House Bill 195 that I think people need to watch and see what's going on. And, you know, it's amazing how the Muslims use their women to get in power, and it's the whole goal. The women aren't challenging their men. They, they understand the principle, they understand in the real world, they can't compete. And if they don't have a man to protect them and have their families, they're not going to have children, just like America. You're not going to win. You're fighting against the Creator. And this is, this verse comes out of the Bible, I'd just like to read it to you real quick if I can, and it just shows what we're dealing with here in America. We got two crises going on in the state of Florida. They set up in Tallahassee, suicide and mental health. They'll say the white people are killing themselves so fast, they can't reproduce themselves. Now they got an epidemic of suicide? I mean, and, I mean, this is, these are the two crises that we're having in Florida? Suicide and mental health? This is what it says in Matthew. It says, "Therefore, say unto you, that the kingdom of God shall be taken from you and given to a people that bringeth forth fruit thereof." Not to a people that kill their fruit, but a people that brings forth fruit of righteousness. Says the fruit to the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, self-control. Against such things, there's no law. The fruit you're bringing forth is a death culture. You've got a culture now that's, I mean, we have an epidemic of suicide in the state of Florida, along with mental health issues that are out of control. And so this is what you're dealing with. So you go watch us, just watch House Bill 195 on the Bible, and you watch, you watch, you watch all the players, and it, watch the whole thing, and, and watch it a couple times and see what's going on, because you sold us out, and now the predators are going to come in and prey on this country, and it's being wiped out. Because the people that are coming in here do not believe in the Constitution, the rights of people. You wouldn't have your rights if it wasn't for the Constitution. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our public comment, and now we're moving on to County Commission Agenda Item 28.
Item number 28 is a funding agreement with St. Petersburg College Seminole Campus in support of the new civic building in an amount of $20,000 from MSTU funds.
A motion by Commissioner Long, second by Commissioner Peters. If you could bring up the voting cards. The only comment I would like to say about this is, I don't believe that this is setting precedent for the rest of the county, because we used to have a county connection center in, in Seminole, and it was intended for the community as well as code enforcement and other county offices, and this kind of replicates this so that it helps to serve the unincorporated part of Seminole as well. Otherwise, I would think it would be a dangerous path to be going on. We'd have all the chambers of commerce coming to request funding from, from us. Okay, moved unanimously. Number 29, we have the County, Pinellas County Health Facilities Authority, and I have ballots for you all to fill out. You are to choose four. And then it will pass the ballots down to Claritha, please. Okay, and next we'll go to Agenda Item 30, which is Appointment to the Board of Adjustment by Commissioner Peters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to appoint Jose Bello. He is Hispanic, and he will be a great addition to that board. I think he'll do a great job representing the county and the citizens that come before.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, and I'm sorry, who did the second? Commissioner Eggers. Avon, the voting ballots, please. A unanimous approval. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 31. Whoops. I got that. Yeah, 31, the Sports Tourism Complex and Event Center. Commissioner Long, you requested that this be put on the County Commission's agenda. I had, was going to share the information with the Tourist Development Council tomorrow, but schedule a discussion about it in April, but if you would like to...
I would, Madam Chair, and thank you for allowing me to do my report, because as you know, I have to leave here at 4:30 today for the canvassing board meeting, so...
Which meeting?
Canvassing board.
Canvassing board, okay. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So, the reason that I was anxious for us to talk about this this afternoon is because of this article that was in the paper, I think you probably all saw it, that indicated what Pasco County was doing. And when I read this, it brought to my mind the staff discussion with the Visit St. Pete Clearwater that popped up a week or, at our last meeting or the weekend, or the meeting before, and I quickly found the white paper that had been done by staff. And if you, if you would remember, we, we started talking about this type of a thing when we were working with Darrell Leclerc and his gondola piece, and what the great big vision might be for the county. And I can't remember if it was Commissioner Justice or Commissioner Welch that brought it up, that caused the discussion to take place, and it was unfortunate that our county administrator wasn't here that day, so he didn't get to hear it. But I was hoping that we could have a brief discussion, I know you're going to talk about it at the TDC, but I think this is a bigger, a bigger project that really would require some sort of a feasibility study with regard to this type of a facility in our county. And I just think that now is the time, and that we're going to be further and further behind if we don't get going.
Well, I had talked to, last week, with TDC and the county attorney staff about trying to put together how much it would cost to do a feasibility study. You know, my concern is, are we too late? Are there other competing facilities? Is there enough, enough demand that if we should put this kind of capital into this, or if we could basically use the land that we, the Toy Town land, and put it out to the world to see if they would like to build some sports facilities? I think there's a lot of options. So, I think it's, the next step should be some kind of feasibility study, and I'm happy to take that back to the TDC. You know, if it's something that the county's interested in building, you know, we've already talked about it, we're going to have to seriously take a look at all the asks for capital from the Tourist Development Council, and tax, excuse me, the tax, tourist development tax. So, I think we just all need to be cognizant of that. Commissioner Gerard?
Well, I just, I share your concern about maybe being too late. When I, when you look at this list, majority of them aren't even opening until this year, and they're, we're surrounded.
We are.
There's one, I guess, Manatee County opened in 2001, but the rest of them are in process right now, so it'd be really hard to do a feasible, well, we can find out whether it's possible to do a feasibility study when the facilities haven't even been built that we'll be competing with.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's kind of interesting.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I support, if it's not cost prohibitive to do the study, I think we should move forward to at least that level. I mean, I don't, I don't know that, just because Pasco or Hernando or Manatee or whoever builds a similar facility, that ours wouldn't be better. And the other options that if you have, if you're booking a tournament, if you can book it in the middle of Pinellas County with the beach option versus booking it somewhere that doesn't have a beach option, I don't think it's an apples-to-apples. I think we have an advantage on some of those things. And so, I would, I would support moving forward, at least with the, some more thorough evaluation to see where we're at from some experts in the field.
Commissioner Welch?
I concur. I actually had the beach word in my mind as well, and none of those options are 20 minutes from our beaches, the number-one beach in the world. You know, we've talked about this over time, was it Bear Creek? Was that the name of the economic development proposal? And we've just got all this land that we haven't been able to use one way or the other. I mean, at one point, we talked about even just putting solar panels on it, you know, getting some use out of that land. And so I'm very interested in possibilities for what we can do there. I think the market for amateur sports, amateur athletics, and this goes back to Kevin Smith when he was with the TDC, he had a proposal. And so I think we can be very competitive, it's very lucrative, as Mayor Creditco has attested to, the Eddie Seymour fields and how active they are, and how much economic impact those softball fields make on our county. I'm really interested in seeing opportunities.
I am too. I think, you know, the, there's nothing in the world that will drive the engine like students participating in sports. I mean, as a parent, traveled all over the country following my kids and their sports. So, the fact that we could potentially have a family-oriented facility that was talked about a few years ago when we were dealing with Darrell Leclerc, I mean, I just thought that was absolutely an out-of-the-ballpark idea. And I just, and, and to that point, did you see this article that was in the Tampa Bay Business Journal today? I mean, it just kind of, I don't know, I think there's a lot of momentum to have something like this in our county.
But we need to do a fact-based study and truly look at the competition and the cost. Commissioner Peters?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I agree with you, and I, I agree about a study. And what I, my, and I'm sure they would do this anyways, but I'm just going to put it out there. It's my understanding they're redoing a lot of the Seminole fields to make soccer at one, baseball at another, with the idea and intent that they could have more tournaments, college tournaments and things like that. Bright House already does college tournaments and big tournaments. So I think when you do the study, we need to do a really good inventory...
Of what we have.
Of what we have and what's already in the pipeline and the potential, because I think what they're looking at doing in Seminole has great potential already on, on what it is that they're going to do. And I, you know, and we haven't really talked about that, and I just saw it when I was campaigning, the citizens showed it to me and talked to me about it. But I, I think that when you do that feasibility study, if we're going to go forward, that we really have to look at the inventory that we already have and how we could best utilize, market, or plan around the facilities that we already have, because we've got some real gems already. And we already have lots of hotel rooms. We've already got the accommodations to, to bring folks here. So, that's just my added thought.
And at the last TDC meeting, we talked about the success of the softball tournament that came to Clearwater. And, you know, it, the room nights that were, that were booked were around those fields, so it does let the lower-priced to mid-price motels compete and have, and sell their room nights. But, you know, so it, it is quite successful in that regard, because, but I do think we have an excellent Visit St. Pete Clearwater sports team that are out actively working with the cities and helping to bring tournaments to those ball fields that we presently have.
And what we heard from Mr. Ramsburger last time was that some of the problem is that, is scheduling. So if, if Clearwater has a local tournament, they get first dibs, as they should, on the facilities they control, and it makes it a challenge for our team to go out and book an ESPN-type tournament like we had if we can't control the dates. That's really, to me, the big advantage of having a facility. Beyond the overall impact is being able to control it ourselves for what we want to do.
Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, well, first of all, I agree with you and Commissioner Peters 100% that we need to do inventory of what we have, because at the end of the day, we don't want to make, we make sure that we're utilizing what we have, that we have a portal, somehow we can coordinate it, which allows us to work closely with, and schedule closely with others around the county, whether it's up in Dunedin in those baseball fields that we're investing lots of money in, or in Clearwater already, they've got beautiful fields there for baseball and soccer, and, and I'm sure we've got others throughout. So I think that's, that's a really important part that we've got to do. I think the hotel inventory is another thing, because we want to make sure that there's something, something close by. And, you know, again, I think a study would at least get us to understand what the industry is all about, what the complexities are, what the scheduling issues are, what kind of software programs need to be in place to, to manage that, 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 I guess, getting rooms or getting fields or whatever to host, host tournaments. I think it can be done. They do it in one city, and we, you know, the, the people, the players get together, the player, they, not the players, but the stakeholders get together and figure out the field time. In Dunedin, every year, they get together and talk about it. It's put on a computer, and you, and you track what's available and what's not available. I think that can be done. So, I would like to see... be done. So I would like to see what the possibilities are out there. There are some things, I think we talked about, like volleyball, indoor volleyball, that maybe we don't have that available. We have 23 or 18 high schools that might have access to fields. And so I think that's what we need to do first. But at the same time, I think concurrently a study to understand the market and the industry would be a good thing, so.
Can I chime in one last thing? I'm not sure how many fields St. Pete College has. And I don't think those are utilized at any kind of level. And so I think there's partnerships out there that maybe we haven't even looked at. So, thank you.
Well, but again, I do know that our Visit St. Pete Clearwater staff is excellent at trying to use the inventory that we do have. This has been a constant, kind of an item that we talk about every year when you're on the Tourist Development Council. And so they have actively gone after the sports market, not aggressively after the sports market. So that's why we've seen more and more tournaments here. But, you know, as part of this, I mentioned it already, but we really need to look at the true economic impact of maybe this capital investment versus other choices that we may have. And at some point, as I mentioned, we're going to have to lay everything out, and we're going to have to make deliberate decisions based on facts and data. So. Great. So I'm just sending an email asking Liz with the Visit St. Pete Clearwater to copy the TDC for tomorrow. If they haven't received this already, we'll bring it up for discussion. And then based on that, we'll do an action item in April at the TDC meeting.
And you'll get back to us with the?
Yes, I'll share the feedback that I receive tomorrow.
And then, may I bring up one other thing that has a timeliness to it?
I'm sure. So is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next thing that I wanted to put on your radar, which I think I've already shared with you, has to do with fact, the Florida Association of Counties and their priority to encourage the state of Florida to develop a resiliency plan for the state. Representative Diamond has House Bill 1369, which moves to do that. And in our conversation that we had yesterday on another topic, we got on to this one. And he asked if the county commission would be amenable to writing a letter, Commissioner Seal, or doing a resolution to support this particular bill and its efforts. It does move right in lock sync with the governor's initiative to open up a new sustainability office for the state of Florida. And since it is right at the beginning of hurricane season, before we really get into it full swing, seemed like it would be a timely time for us to take some formal action to let them know that we support it.
Does this have a counter Senate bill?
What's the bill number?
Oh, the House bill is 1369. And it does have a Senate bill, but when we were talking, I was driving, so I didn't have an opportunity to write it down.
Do you know?
Do you know, Brian? I think it's a legislator from South Florida.
It doesn't have a Senate companion bill. However, Senator Rodriguez in the Senate is working on a similar bill. And I think the goal there is that if they can each get their bills through one committee, there's a potential to come to an agreement on some language.
I thought he mentioned, there's another senator that he mentioned that was filing a bill in the Senate. So if you'd keep your eye on it and let us know, that would be good.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Would you mind if we waited till we got the companion Senate bill before we bring it back here?
Yeah, until we've got closer language on what it might look like, yeah.
I would feel more comfortable if, this language looks fine to me now, but I'd like to see what the companion bill is, so that we can then either send a letter from the chair's office with everybody's approval and/or have you start to track it. So, well, you should be tracking it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Long. And we now move on to county commission board reports miscellaneous. I'll start with you, Commissioner Long, since you need to leave.
Okay, I'll be quick. The T-BARDA does not have a meeting this month. It was postponed for lack of the ability to get a quorum. And our next meeting is April 26. And it will be in Manatee County. The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council's Future of the Regions Award is going to be that same morning at 8:00 at the Caroline Hilton. So that's a bit of a problem for me, but it'll be the first one that I missed. I'm sorry?
Which state?
April 26 is the next T-BARDA board meeting. And it's also the same morning that the Future of the Regions Award will be at the Caroline Hilton. So as you all know, it is very difficult to split yourself in two if you're on a board that involves two different or three different or whatever number of counties.
I'll be there April 26 at the T-BARDA meeting.
Yeah, because we got an important thing to vote on that day.
I know.
Thank you. I'll let Commissioner Eggers give you the forward Pinellas report. But I wanted to share with you that you heard me mention that the CEO from Largo Medical had retired, and they now have a new CEO at Largo Medical by the name of Adam Rudd, R-U-D-D. And he comes to us from Las Vegas, a big hospital in Las Vegas, just a charming young gentleman with two children. And he's very anxious to get back to the Tampa Bay region. He was here 10 years ago. And I forgot what hospital he was in 10 years ago, but still with the HCA system. And I did have, and the staff might be interested in this, a fabulous meeting with Dr. Ravi Chari, who is the president of the HCA Division West about two weeks ago. And in the course of our conversation, we started to talk about resiliency. And he mentioned some of the things that HCA corporate does in the days before a big storm is about to hit, because a lot of their hospitals here in Pinellas County, you all know, is right on the water. And so it was a real eye-opener to me to learn that FEMA goes to their corporate offices to learn the newest and greatest things that they're doing for resiliency, because they have one of the best plans in the country. And I thought our staff would be delighted to hear that. It could be quite a resource for us. We just wanted to have a conversation with them. And then just yesterday, we had an opportunity to meet with the new president of Duke, who is, the women will love this, a woman. I thought that was so fascinating, given the line of work and how male-oriented it is. Is Mr. What's-his-name still here? He probably would love to hear that, wouldn't he? Anyway.
Snarky.
Oh.
I knew that that was good.
You guys are...
See, you didn't make it through the meeting.
It's not nice. Anyway, she has a love, if you ever have a chance to meet with her, she has a lovely story about a trip that she took to Saudi Arabia with Duke Energy. She was the only woman, and it was just really fascinating. So I share that with you to say, look forward to a very interesting conversation with this woman at Duke. That's all I have to report today, Madam Chair.
I've met her briefly, but I look forward to talking to her since I lived in Saudi Arabia. Well, you may not know that, but I did.
I think you did share that with me one time, but it was, it just was a really interesting, I found it interesting. I don't know, Barry.
Yeah, I've got stories to tell, too.
Okay. Well, maybe you should tell your stories.
Results of our...
Yes, from the appointments to the Health Facility Authority Board, Kevin Donahue, Elizabeth Fountain, Denise Minio, and Nancy Ridenour.
Ridenour, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, fellow commissioners, for, we have an excellent group there. Commissioner Eggers?
Thanks. Well, tomorrow is our forward Pinellas meeting, so that's my before Pinellas report, short and sweet. A lot of things going on there. We don't have a meeting with the CVEB, the Veterans Group, until the end of March. Tampa Bay Waters Executive Meeting is next Monday. We'll be having more cheerful dialogue about TAP and all the good stuff that the City of Tampa is making us go through. And then the TMA, we meet on the 5th of April. And so, long and short, most of my committees don't meet until later this month. I did have a chance to have a good meeting at the Pinellas School Collaborative, and I just found some interesting things that I wanted to make sure that I shared with you. They wanted me to make sure that I shared with you. So, National School Bus Illegal Passing Survey. So they did a survey on April 18th last year, which happened to be my anniversary, and I took the day off. I wasn't part of the survey, of course. But anyway, 600, the bus drivers reported in that one day, 645 vehicles illegally passing on one day. 304 passed the bus from the front, the opposite direction. 341 passed from the rear. Most vehicles passed, most, this is like sad funny, not funny funny, but most vehicles passed on the left side of the bus. 17 vehicles passed on the right side of the bus. You know where the kids are standing and getting ready to come off or go on. So obviously, there's a problem that doesn't really, the statistics that they gathered did not really give us a sense of where the issues were. So that is a problem. And they're looking into how we can go about and do this survey again and try to get a feel for where the problem areas might be. But that is a, that was a scary, scary thing that they shared with us. Johns Hopkins did a nice little piece here on, that talked a little bit about bicyclists' issues, pedestrian issues, motorist issues, all about intersection management. Bicycle issue of interest that all kids under 16 must wear a helmet. When you're, pedestrians crossing, you look left, right, and then left again. Motorists, bicycles are legal vehicles. You have to move over at least three feet, give three feet distance between you and the bicycle. So if you don't have it, then wait till you do before you go around it. So that was just something else that I thought was interesting. The last thing I'll share with you is, obviously, I think most of us know the two-lane passing rules. So if you're approaching on a two-lane and the stop sign comes out, you stop. Divided highway, it's pretty clear that you can, if you're approaching the bus, you can move cautiously and continue. You don't have to stop if it's a true divided highway. But if it's a turning lane, a multi-lane paved access, so you have that turning lane in the middle, you have to stop. And there's many, 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 many people who don't know that rule. So I think these are just some things that we all have to be made aware of. And I said, obviously, you know, not a criticism of anybody, but we need to get that word out just a little bit better to folks. So anyway, just have a couple of comments to make here based on the, well, we, I was going to talk about the north loop, the trail loop conversation, but we've had that conversation. I wanted to commend the City of Dunedin for doing another 35th Teachers Appreciation Breakfast, which fills the house. There's about 400 teachers that show up. And it's just, it's rocking and rolling. I mean, they just have a lot of fun. They talk about a lot of different things that are just kind of light and airy on the day. But it's really good. They give out awards. They give out things that they accomplish awards, but they also give out a lot of gifts to the teachers. It's just a really, really nice day. And the Chamber of Commerce does a wonderful job. And I just wanted to commend them on that. I attended my first Pinellas County Behavioral Health Systems meeting yesterday. Lourdes and Daisy were there, of course, and found, as you all know, a lot of passionate, competitive people in one room, talking about really significant issues, complex issues. And so it was, you know, eye-opening for me. There was a lot of discussion going in one direction on Marchment, and then there was a different conversation going in a different direction on Marchment, which was just confusing enough for someone for me. But Lourdes was kind of sifting through it all and making sure that they were saying what they meant to be saying. And so, anyway, it was a good meeting, and I'm learning a lot about the industry, at least trying to get more comfortable with it for me, so.
Commissioner Eggers, was this a meeting that was hosted by us, or is this the JWB Behavioral Health Group?
Go ahead, Lourdes.
Lourdes, Assistant County Administrator. It is chaired by Barbara Dare and its providers.
Every once a month, Monday meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you. That's an interesting group. I've been there.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. So, like I said, it was my first. So, you know, it was very interesting. But in any event, looking forward to the coming month. I'm going to visit the Vincent House. The White Chapel has got a historic marker going in on 3/20 at 11:00 AM. Old Days is having a parade on March 29. And really, the only other thing that I would like to just chat just briefly about is that probably in the last few months, the previous county administrator brought forward the idea that we would put a Purple Heart monument down at the memorial park next to the VA. And I had some concerns with that, that perhaps the right due diligence with our veterans hadn't been done, or the engagement with the veterans in the way that was more open-ended as opposed to kind of directional. And so I was hoping, and I was hoping that perhaps you all would be okay with us just checking back with our veterans to make sure that the question that was being asked was, do you want that kind of facility from the county? And where would you like to have it versus, do you want one, and do you mind it being at that location? So I just, I've been just, I've gotten a lot of input from different veterans about different locations, and had hoped that those different locations were given a little bit more serious consideration. So I'm not really wanting a long detour on this, just a check back with everybody to make sure that the veteran input that we received is, I guess, accurate from that perspective. So Barry, do you have any?
Well, the question, and what Commissioner Eggers raised, is how we pose the question. And the way we pose the question is, we have all of our veterans-type activities at Veterans Park. And so the issue with the Purple Heart, you know, issue was, this is what we're proposing to do, and we recommend this location. Is there any objection? And so there was no objection. And so we moved forward with that. This is a broader question to reach out to say, would you want us to look at other locations? And that's really, you know, a question back to the commission. If you want us to go back, we would have to revisit that.
Again, the motivation behind it is that there are a lot of veterans that have thoughts and input on this that I just, I didn't want them feeling disenfranchised or kind of pushed aside. One of the reasons that I kind of looked for having a Pinellas County Veterans Committee, we're going down a different path right now to explore something with Lourdes and Daisy, which I'm comfortable with. But we really don't have an organization that necessarily is looking out for the benefits of Pinellas County as a whole. They did go to several different groups. And I wouldn't even mind if they went back to those same groups, in addition to a couple of others that I gave them, to just explore that question that if, is that comfortable, is that where they're comfortable having the Purple Heart? There are other places that it could be. And I'm, you know, if the veterans come back and say, no, that's, we meant to say that's where we'd like to have it, I think it's significant. And if there's a different feedback, I think we, as decision-makers, should at least be aware of that. So that was my only take. And again, I don't want a 90-day detour. I really wanted a short window to get that feedback, because we're really still targeting. And at least the last conversation I had with Barry was, is that if we do this quick detour, we can still have it done.
In time for veterans.
By August 7, which is really the key date, which is Purple Heart Day, so.
August 7.
So just, and I think Barry wanted to make sure that the commission was okay with that, look back, check back with the veterans. If not, then we can go with the decision that has been made.
Well, Commissioner Eggers, obviously, you must be hearing from some veterans groups that are disagreeing with the direction that we're going in?
No, there was, there was a veterans group with a significant petition that was brought here that had another preference of a location. Okay? So that's...
Which was, remind me?
It was down the Seminole area.
The Water Tower.
It wasn't necessarily a veterans group. There were veterans in that group, but they were really looking at the Water Tower project. And we discounted that because of the cost associated with... And we discounted that because of the cost associated with purchase of the property. We would have to buy it from utilities.
Right. I just want to have us be mindful also, there may be different individuals or groups that would have a geographic preference that could then say, no, put it in my neighborhood, no, put it in my neighborhood. So, I think we need to, you know, make sure we're, you know, kind of looking at the broader questions so that, I, I don't mind having Lourdes and Daisy and the veterans group re-ask the question, but I want us to also be mindful that we really don't want to have this become a competition between groups.
To your point, Commissioner Seal, you may remember when Father's Wick came and wanted us to appropriate a significant amount of dollars for our veterans memorial in Clearwater, and we chose not to go down that route because there are 24 cities in this county, and you run the risk of every one of them wanting their own veterans memorial or veterans park. And we have a beautiful veterans park in our county with our fallen heroes. Remember that beautiful memorial that we have down there? I mean, that is just gorgeous, and the ceremony was magnificent. And so, I agree with your comments about you can talk to 50 different groups and get 50 different ideas, so it's a kind of a slippery slope. May I say just one more thing because I have to leave? In the, in the effort to be brief with my report, I neglected to share a two-page document about what's going on at PSTA. And if, with your permission, I'd like to have Doyle email it to everyone.
Okay.
So, you can get a comprehensive look at all of the things that we are talking about as a board to try and resolve our financial issues before we have our funding workshop so you're all very aware. Is that all right?
Okay, that would be fine. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I'm going to miss.
Good luck with canvassing.
Yes.
I was just there yesterday.
Okay.
And I'm going in on Friday, so do a good job so we don't have to count too many votes.
Be careful about saying that, or we'll think we're stifling.
Does anyone else want to comment on Purple Heart?
There's not, there's not a real undercurrent here, so there's not a, you know, an undercurrent out there.
That's what I'm worried about.
I understand. I want to make sure that we're, that the folks that we have asked, or asked, they understand what the question was.
Just one quick thing. One, there was, it was a group, and I couldn't tell, to be honest, whether the group was really pushing a, a military recognition, or whether they were looking to prevent anything from going at the Water Tower Park. And the priorities were probably a little of both. And then, the second thing was that we, while we didn't fund with general funds, we did fund BP money for the Clearwater Veterans Park.
We did.
So, I want to make sure we remember that.
That's true. Okay, Commissioner Eggers, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Gerard.
Okay, most of my meetings have not happened this month either, but we did have a Career Source meeting the other day where we went ahead with the RFP for selling the Science Center. We'll be looking April 3rd at bids for that. Apparently, there's quite a bit of interest.
Good.
Including from some nonprofits who may be thinking of putting affordable housing or some other sort of thing on there. So, we've given ourselves room to make a decision based on the public good, so. On March 20th, we have another meeting. We do have a lot of meetings. Where DEO is coming, Department of Economic Opportunity, hopefully to give us some idea what the heck they found. Gosh, or something, oh, on April, yeah, April 3rd, we're opening bids. The Youth Advisory Committee is going to be meeting at Animal Services this month and taking the grand tour. They're going to be volunteering, they're having a volunteer day at Heritage Village. And I just wanted to remind people that I'm not going to be doing this for the rest of the year. They'll, they'll be done in May. I think they come and do a presentation in May. And after that, somebody needs to pick it up pretty quick so they can start the process all over again.
And we mentioned this at board appointments, that new person for the Youth Advisory Committee needs to step up to the plate literally and take over from Commissioner Gerard, who's been the leader for at least four years.
A few years, yeah. Well, I took it over from.
Then I think Commissioner Justice did it, so.
Very difficult to take it over in the middle of the year.
Year, so we, that's why this is going to be a different calendar in that regard. So, if you're interested in taking this over in May and developing our youth and following in the good footsteps of Commissioner Gerard, please let Cindy, my assistant, know.
It's fun, actually.
Okay, yep, that's it. All right, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple items. Commissioner Eggers mentioned, but I forwarded you an email from our marketing department. On March 20th at 11:00 a.m., we will officially recognize the designation and the marker for the state marker program for the Sutton White Chapel in Palm Harbor, and it's a public event. And if you're in the area, we'd love to have you there. Friday, April 26th, is the Area Agency on Aging Pinellas Pasco Annual Meeting Annual Luncheon. You should have got an invite on that, but if you're interested in attending that, let me know. I'll get you all the details on that. And two other quick little things is, I think it was about 15 years ago, I passed a bill when I was in the House, and we're going to finally see it take effect. So, it, sometimes it moves a little slow, but we're going to finally see it take effect because it was a bill, a building naming bill, which in the state system, there's a lot of rules and similar to what we have at the county level. But the person had to be either retired or resigned or passed away. And so, in May, and the 15th is a date I have for your calendars, is we will finally name Kokina Hall at USF St. Petersburg, H. William Heller Hall.
Oh, that's nice.
So, that will be a great day for everybody. And then, the last thing is that I got a text during the meeting is from some folks that are doing the trips to Tallahassee, and I guess this week is Hillsborough Day in Tallahassee. And say, why don't you have a Pinellas Day in Tallahassee?
We don't have a Pinellas.
And about 100 years ago, we used to have a Pinellahassie Day.
Right.
But I assume that was, went the wayside of budget cuts years ago, but I don't know if those that have been on for a long time have any positive recollection of participating in a Pinellas Day?
The Chamber of Commerce, I think.
Or what?
Typically, they are typically.
We've used the FAC legislative day as our data.
Right.
But this would be a day where you have, it would be probably something the CBB would participate greatly in as far as touting something that was going on in Pinellas County.
Cue on the.
To the legislature, that kind of thing.
Often, it's the Chamber.
Actually, tomorrow.
Analahassie Day was maybe back in the 90s.
I don't remember us ever doing that.
I remember that.
It was actually brought up to my attention, and we considered changing the Tourist Development Council meeting tomorrow because apparently tomorrow is like tourist development.
Yeah.
In Tallahassee, so, but we.
So, anyway, not, not for this session, obviously, but if it's something that you have an interest in, we can talk about it, but it would.
It would be great if the chambers took that over as kind of coordinating it.
Typically, chambers do it. The problem is we have so many chambers, and they don't want to do it unified. If they would do it unified, it would make sense because then you'd have all of Pinellas County go.
Pinellas Park takes a contingency. St. Pete, I think, is up this week.
Pinellas Park does take a contingency. So does St. Pete, so does Clearwater. Well, yeah, sort of.
So, anyway, just to, I, I wanted to at least pass that message along to the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Peters.
Oh, yes, thank you. I actually typically don't talk a lot, but today I've got a lot more to say, if that's okay, Madam Chair, if you'd indulge me. First of all, when I first came on, Rahim and his staff were great, so I just wanted to, and I recognized him before, but they were outstanding. And most recently, it's been Daisy Rodriguez and Blake Lyons have been just so helpful and wonderful, and I just so appreciate all of you guys. You really do a great job, and you make us look good out there, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it all. But also, I, you all might have gotten that email about ACTS potentially having involuntary facility for, for marchments down, up at the domiciliary, so if you're looking at me funny, there was an email about that. I hope you all got it. There's been talk about it. I was at, Lourdes is one of the meetings yesterday. So, there's talk about it to make sure that it benefits Pinellas County in the best way. There was questions about whether or not there were enough calls to North County that would make that a convenient location, and I think based on the data, we definitely have enough need and demand in North County. So, I'm looking forward to that whole, whatever it's going to, however it's going to turn out, I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's a good first step. The other is, I want, I went to the groundbreaking yesterday for Beckwith Electricity, Beckwith Electric. He's a small business, small business growing really big, and his business is about to double. He's going to add 400 new jobs in manufacturing in the Pinellas Park kind of Largo area, and that's really exciting. They make the fuses and the great big boxes that go on power lines and power poles, and he got a contract to double his business, which is great for Pinellas County. So, they had the brown grape in yesterday. He's got plenty of land to expand whatever he needs, but my hats and kudos goes to Barry and his team and the Pinellas Park team that are doing everything they can to make the permitting seamless because he has to have his first delivery by July. So, he's got to expand his facility exponentially very, very quickly. And so, great job on, you know, all the staff and working with the cities and making sure that that is seamless. It's really, really important, and so, you guys are doing a great job. You had nothing but wonderful things to say. I met with the folks in Tierra Verde last night. They look forward to your meeting, April 30th, I believe it is. And I think they got a good attitude, and I think they're looking forward to meeting you, so good luck with that. And I mean that seriously. I really mean that seriously. I mean that seriously. No, no kidding aside. The other thing I wanted to bring up is I went to the Fusion meeting, and I don't know if any of you guys have ever gone to that meeting, but it's the medical examiner and kind of like an opiate task force, Lourdes, would you call that, the opiate task force? And there's some alarming things that I heard that have me for pause. And again, because we don't have a marchman facility, these are people that maybe could have, family members could have had a tool to use, maybe save their loved ones' lives, but we don't have that really. The sheriff's doing a good job, but most of the people he reaches, it comes through law enforcement, and these are people we probably didn't get that way. So, what's going on in the first four months of this year, we are at 69.1% of the suspected overdoses that we were at last year. For the total last year, we are at 69% the first four months. We're at 53% of the total amount of Narcan that's administered, and the number of transports, and you guys saw the EMS report, and he said, they're, they're nearly double, and every month, they're nearly double. So, the other thing that I think was concerning to me, and I'm just going to throw some of this out there, and was the man, the medical examiner's report. There is a new fentanyl in town. Fentanyl is the dangerous drug that people are dying from when they use heroin because that's what they're cutting it with. Well, this is a new fentanyl. It's a Flora, so it's a Flora fentanyl. And the only place that it's been reported by the medical examiner in the state of Florida is Pinellas County, which means that it's originating here. There's been 110 issues where the medical examiner, through the toxicology reports, have found it. And so, my concern is, just like Manatee County became the epicenter for the first fentanyl round, that Pinellas County, because of this new Flora fentanyl, could now become the epicenter for that since it hasn't been reported in any other county. The other thing that concerns me is there's a, and I think it's important for the citizens to hear this, and this is why I'm bringing it up, because it's not in the paper, and, and I don't know if, it kind of frightened the folks last night in Tierra Verde when I spoke to them, but I think it's important. So, there's a new date-rate drug that's on the street now. It will eliminate total amnesia, so if you are a victim of that drug, it's flavorless, it's tasteless, it's odorless, you won't see it, and you will remember nothing, and it is widely now on the street. And I think people need to know that, and as I said to the folks in Tierra Verde last night, you know, if you have young adults, they need to know, and not just girls, that young male adults are victims as well. It's just not widely reported. And so, I think it's something that we need to let the citizens know to be careful. Many of the drugs, the fake drugs are on the street, and I think the result of this is legislation that we've passed that says you can't, doctors can't prescribe more than three days of opiates, right? And we wanted to shut down the pill mills. That was all good intention, but what happened is when someone can't get more than three days and they're suffering, and they use Tom Petty as an example, he had a hip problem. He was touring, he couldn't get more than three days. It was difficult to get to doctors is what they're suspecting, right? They're just not proof for sure, but he ended up getting his drugs on the street. And the oxys that are on the street right now have five different drugs included in that pill that they're pressing on the street. And so, it's a big issue. It's coming up, it's getting bigger. The other one was the, the medical examiner said that they're now getting some heroin overdoses where there's no heroin, that they're using just fentanyl on the street because it's so much cheaper. So, so it's a big crisis, and it really hasn't hit the news yet. Our numbers are, are just absolutely staggering when we are already going to hit, probably very soon, our total numbers of last year. So, in 2010, when you did your pill mill legislation, there were 280 deaths. 2017, there were 258. Well, in 2018, there's 313 reported with 16 that haven't been determined yet, so potentially 329 deaths. And at this point, we're almost there already. So, so I think this year is going to be very critical when it comes to overdoses in our community, and I just think that we need to be raising awareness and talking about it more. The other thing that would concern me about this data is that legislators will make sure we get the funding we need for the Narcan and any other resources that we need for treatment or anything else when it comes to this. If we're going to have another crisis bigger than the crisis we've had in past years, so my recommendation is that we send a letter maybe to Representative Sprouls and give him the data on where we are on our Narcan, what we've administered, and the suspected overdose calls, so he can understand that within the first four months, we're past 50% of where we were last year, and that when they look at the budget this year, they're, we're probably going to need expanded access to Narcan. Law enforcement is using it. We're saving more lives, we're extending more lives, but that's a budget cut that at this point, we can't afford. And so, I'm sorry I'm on my soapbox, but this is my soapbox, and I just think it's critically important, and, and that meeting was, Lourdes, if I made a mistake, I ask you to correct me, but if we thought it was bad in 2010, what we're going to see this year is going to be horrific. So, that's my recommendation. I don't know if you'd entertain that. The other concern, though, and again, I would like the legislature to know that Flora fentanyl is in Pinellas County, it's not been seen anywhere else, and we've got to address it. And I, I just think that at least our delegation at a minimum should be made aware that that's out there, and it's about to penetrate the state, but Pinellas County is going to be the hub for it.
Okay. What has happened to, I would assume that the opioid task force that was meeting, are they continuing to meet, Lourdes, to be able to take some of this concern and information and have a plan?
Lourdes, Assistant County Administrator, they do continue to meet. Actually, their next meeting is coming up. It's going to be a webinar to look at their strategic plan is what they're doing. Dr. Cho's team actually attends the Fusion meeting, and I actually shared those slides with him this week, so.
Commissioner Watz.
Can you just explain a little bit about Fusion, what that stands for and who's involved in that?
I'm not sure what the acronym is. I can get you who's, who attends those meetings. And this is exactly what the commissioner gave an update on is what they talk about. It's not me.
Is it law enforcement, providers?
Law enforcement, providers, yes, yes, to all of those.
Okay.
Our human services team attends.
How long has that been a group?
Well, it's been as long as I've been here. I mean, it's only been four years I've been here, but.
Mostly first responders and the health department, 911, police, fire. Fascinating, absolutely fascinating information. Scary, but fascinating.
Sobering.
Sobering. And the other, you know, I think the health department has told us before, the other thing that I, I wanted to mention is the hepatitis A. It's a big issue. They're trying to get the word out there. Last year in Pinellas County, there were 547 incidences of hepatitis A, and so far for 2019 fiscal year, we're at 424. And this is something that lives on the surface, and so, anybody is susceptible to it if they haven't been vaccinated, and so, it's just something that I think we need to help raise awareness about, so I thought I would take this opportunity to do so. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Dr. Cho is really going to appreciate that, by the way. Thank you.
Commissioner Watz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Peters, for that sobering information. I know a conversation I'm going to have with my daughters tonight.
Go ahead. Thank you.
About the latest and greatest drug. Just a couple of quick things on. Just a couple of quick things on, we only have one official meeting this month, right? The rest were workshops, so I'm not missing a meeting. So we haven't met since our March 1st SBE update conversation at the epicenter, and it was fantastic, very well attended. Barry spoke, we had purchasing risk, I think OMB was there, of course, economic development. And I think we had 200 attendees, I don't know what the official count was.
What?
But the room was full at the epicenter, including, of course, businesses, but also some partners, cities were there. Had a gentleman from Pinellas Park, said he'd stand up and said he wanted to be involved in it, so I just want to thank Barry and his staff for continuing to take that forward. On the 27th, the BTS Board met, we had an update to our security training policy, it's gonna require annual security training for every employee, put some teeth into that, given some of the risks that are out there from computer viruses and phishing. And finally, we also toured the operating center and the technology showroom downstairs in the basement, there's actually a little store where you can see technology, test it out.
He was a happy.
Yes. And yes, they get a pencil out of it, but Commissioner Justice, there, it's agnostic, there are all kinds of technology down there, even Samsung. Been disappointed to learn our CEO and Belinda are both big Samsung advocates, so you're making infiltration, sir, but that's downstairs, if y'all wanna test out laptops, iPads, all those devices, you can actually use it, see how it's gonna work for your needs. And finally, I want to congratulate Coach Anthony Lawrence and the mighty Lakewood Spartan Boys, a high school basketball team that went all the way to the class 6A championship game this year, and they lost that game, but they're number one in our hearts. This year, they had to play the whole season as away games. Their gym was set to be refurbished, I don't think it's been updated since I was there, and right before the season, they had a fire, and so they couldn't play at home all year, but they went on to a 27-4 record and got all the way to the state championships. So congratulations to the mighty Spartans, Commissioner Justice. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick update on the Juvenile Welfare Board CEO search. The last day for resumes to be received is March 20th. I already, as part of the selection committee, have that many resumes that I received the other day, and then we are scheduling, April 14th is our kind of review day to start to whittle down which resumes we're interested in, down to probably 10 to 12, kind of following the same process we've done for the county administrator's search, et cetera. So stay tuned, and then the only other thing I wanted to do was to send my sympathy to the Vivian Haken family, Dr. Barry Haken, who was a long-term doctor in our community, very well-respected, and he passed away late February, and I just wanted to send sympathies to his family. Vivian has been on our Florida Botanical Gardens Foundation Board forever and ever as a master gardener and very engaged in our community, so I just wanted to extend our sympathies. So with that, yes, sir?
The, the applicants for the Executive Director of JWB, are those on the website anywhere, is that, is that what I need to do?
I'm not sure whether they are yet, let me do some checking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. You know, I made that suggestion about letting our delegation know, does that take an agreement or a vote, or?
Letting the delegation know, VARS.
The Narcan administration, the suspected overdose, and the fact that Flora fentanyl is on the street.
Brian was taking notes, I think he'll handle it appropriately.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that a letter was sent or something was sent.
But I really think, I mean, it's great for the legislature to know for funding piece of it, and, you know, possibly for getting ahead of this, but I think that, you know, it's within Pinellas County, using the law enforcement and the health providers and the Health Department, they really, that's why I brought up the opioid task force, they really need to be studying this and ratcheting down and, and coming up with a plan. I don't want to wait for others to.
Understood, but I do want them to be made aware.
And Commissioner Eggers has talked about the suicide, so all this kind of needs to be wrapped into some progressive efforts. I did forget to mention, we have, again, I think you all are aware, that Juvenile Welfare Board is doing a mental health initiative for children, and that is on the JWB agenda for tomorrow, to continue to use a consultant to finish our work in that endeavor, so.
I just want one clarification, the numbers I gave you for suspected overdoses did not include suicides. So they kept the, what they knew were suicides were not included in the data I shared, just clarification.
All right, with that, we are temporarily adjourned until we have our public hearing starting at 6 o'clock. Thank you.